A regular meeting of the Delta County Commissioners is being held this date for the service of following call. In a letter to the Commissioners made of July 4, 2023, and reading as follows. The Honorable Members of the Delta County Board of Commissioners, dear Commissioners, a regular meeting of the Delta County Board of Commissioners is scheduled for Tuesday, July 18, 2023, at 5:15 PM in the multipurpose room at the multi-purpose room of the Delta County Chamber of Commerce. Sincerely yours and I, Colonel Robbins, Delta County Clerk. Please rise for a word of prayer. As we begin this meeting, we are thankful for our many blessings. We ask for your guidance to help our Commissioners with decisions in the best interest of the citizens who of Delta County. And we pray for the safety of our military men and women. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome. Mr. Melner.
Here.
Mr. View.
Here.
Mr. Barron.
Here.
Mr. Mallor.
Here.
And Mr. Peterson.
Here.
All right, the meeting of the Delta County Board. Thank you, folks. This meeting will come to order. Thank you for making this a part of your evening. We would need approval of the minutes of previous sessions of the County Board of 6/20/23. Moved by Commissioner Barron.
Supported.
Supported by Commissioner Melner. Additional discussion, gentlemen? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That would pass. Additionally, we have the necessity to approve tonight's agenda. I have some additions on the agenda that the administration gave me. If it would please the Commission, I would like to add Finance Committee Minutes of 7/17/23, the stipend for the Building and Zoning Assistant Administrator, additional the Visit Escanaba Loan, and the Airport Manager Salary Package. So we have four items. If you have no objections, I would like those added to the agenda.
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion to accept the agenda as amended by Commissioner Peterson. Supported by Commissioner Barron. Additional discussion. All those signify by saying aye who approve.
Aye.
Opposed? We have an agenda for this evening. Thank you.
Well, I'd like to make an adjustment to the agenda with the board, please. The, it's basically item number one under the old contract, I mean, under unfinished business, excuse me.
Yep.
I would like to move that to the final item of the day and go into executive, a closed session. It's called for Attorney-Klient Privilege Communication from our legal office.
So, under old business, there are two items. Commissioner View has moved that we would take the item regarding the contract for Ashley and that we would move that to the final item on tonight's agenda. And in which case then we would go into closed session. That is his motion. Do I have a second?
Yes.
I have a second. So it's moved by Commissioner View, seconded by Commissioner Melner. Additional discussion?
We just approved the agenda.
I know, because...
Well, he didn't get an opportunity.
No, he didn't have an opportunity. That's why I'm not, I'm not, you know.
I let one Commissioner speak first, but there are changes.
I understand, sir. So, I, you know. And I did ask, so, uh...
Thank you.
So, in addition to add this agenda, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And that would pass, and we will please make the necessary adjustments to your agendas, please. Okay, we have communications received, communications forwarded, anything?
Yes.
We do, okay. Here's, do you want the microphone?
No, I don't need one.
Okay, very good. So, we do have communications received and forwarded. I would need a motion to place them on file.
Some were.
Moved by Commissioner Barron.
Supported.
Supported by Commissioner Melner. Additional discussion?
Yes, I noticed in there that, is there another John Melner of School Craft County?
I don't know.
Well, under some of the communications and minutes in there, it said...
What that is, is, I am... Go ahead. What it is, is on the Community Action Board, the Chair of the Community Action Board could not get another member from School Craft County to be on the, or the Community Action Board. And in the rules, says they can put anybody they want on it. So they nominated me to be on the Community Action Board. So that's why my name's on it.
And do you represent Delta County on that?
Nope.
Okay, so you're just representing the School Craft.
Right.
I was kind of confused how it clears it up. Thank you.
All right. Okay, do we vote on that?
Not yet.
Okay, all those in favor of putting this on file signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That would pass. Very good. We have reports of standing statutory special committees and others. We have the...
Yes.
We have a, would you like the microphone? We had a...
Would you like me to read them, which company, or...
Here, take the mic. Oh, thank you, sir.
We have received the minutes for the standing and statutory committees of High Press Board of March 23, 2023, April 27, May 25. We've also received the minutes of the Community Action and Human Resource Authority Minutes of March 23, April 27. We received the Solid Waste and the Board, Solid Waste Authority Minutes of March 28, April 25, and May 23. We received the Human Services Board Minutes of April 27, May 25, along with the Public Health Minutes of May 9 and June 13.
I would, I would need a motion to place those on file.
Some were.
Moved by Commissioner View.
Supported.
Supported by Commissioner Peterson. Additional discussion?
Yes, Commissioner, Commissioner View, you're on the, not Delta's, not Delta's, but the...
Solid Waste, yes, I am.
Solid Waste, excuse me. I noticed the minutes on your, the incoming expense ledger, the recycling sector is, seems to be hemorrhaging a lot of ones. Is that the case? Do they have a plan to address that?
Yes, they do. That, that is normal in the first half of the year, and it catches up later on, is what I'm told.
That's a normal reading in the beginning of the year on losses, and it usually catches up at the end of the year, I was told. And being new, I'm just waiting to see what happens, and I, I trust what information was presented at our meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, all. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, we would place those items on file. Public comment on agenda items, this is specific to agenda items. If you've signed up, you may come up and state your name, and you have three minutes. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Verdi Laugh. I'm in the National Township. At the last meeting of your...
...meeting, I think so.
Um, Ashley...
We'll get you a microphone. We'll give you the time, okay?
Hand yours up.
Yeah, I'll bring it over. Oh, watch the cables.
Watch out for the cables.
You're welcome.
At the last meeting, well, number, number one I want displaced in the photograph. At the last meeting, Commissioner Barron refused to reduce himself from any conflicts of interest or any code of ethics as a supervisor on the Board. Commissioner Board Barron was also not compliant on twenty cease and desist notices and ignored five affidavits that I'm aware of, all served PM on June 20th before the County Commission Board. The affidavit indicated the maladministration and malfeasance that occurred in the various offices held by elected servants of the people, and it includes the required solution which the people demand. There is no stronger link between men than an oath. According to section, our Article VII, Section 33, removal of elected officers, any elected officer of a political subdivision may be removed from office in the manner and for the causes provided by the law. My next thing is, Mr. Barron, why are you so adamant on destroying Escanaba Township? It seems like you have a vengeance against us. Is it because we know too much of what has gone on in your life? Thank you.
Thank you. We have Liki Mishaw up next.
Mr. Mallor?
Yeah.
Here's a microphone right next to you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Hello, and thank you for the use of the facility tonight. Welcome.
I'm welcoming you to our Delta County Commerce Center. We love having you here. And the, is it the conference hall over there? Yeah, that's all right. That's excellent. So, I just wanted to say thank you to everyone who purchased tickets already and supporting the Northern Lights Music Festival, and certainly saw the value of supporting this tremendous event and opportunity in Delta County. I thank the Finance Committee for asking that, that the request for a loan for Visit Escanaba be added to tonight's agenda. I appreciate the fact that it's going to be discussed. And it's no risk loan as far, it's not a grant request, it's a no-risk loan request that's coming from Visit Escanaba to the county, which would be a loan that would be paid back with interest. I do want to say that by supporting this type of a loan request, you're not only supporting this event, but you're supporting economic development and goods and services that have been purchased or will be purchased by, by members of our Chamber of Commerce and other members within the community. I think that it's an opportunity to invest and also get a return on that investment, obviously, as, as Visit Escanaba will pay back the loan with, with interest. We're partners with the county in so many different areas that this obviously seemed like a good opportunity for us to work together once again. I want to, I want to give you a little bit of an idea of some of the goods and services that have been purchased in locally. Obviously, you know, this, this stimulates, this type of activity supports and stimulates our local economy. We have upgraded the roof of the grandstand area with, so that there's sufficient power to support the stage, the audio, the lights, those services were purchased by Comus Electric. Ed Burnett did all of the stage foundation construction. The fencing has been purchased, has been secured through Delta Fence. We've purchased or renting corporal restrooms, tents, we've purchased signage locally. We are working with, tracking with Escanaba Public Safety and Delta Course for emergency and, and security services and utilities. I mean, think about the utilities alone that are going to be invested within the city of Escanaba. The, the security and emergency services, Delta Course PI, Escanaba Public Safety, Rampart. We've purchased merchandise locally and, you know, catering hospitality has all been purchased locally also. So, this not only supports Visit Escanaba, it certainly helps to upgrade the fairgrounds and absolutely supports our businesses within Delta County. So, I thank you for your time, and again, thanks for being here. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Thank you. All right, we have the next person up, Robert, I believe. General public comment, excuse me, comment on the agenda items, I'm sorry. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Robert Mishaw, CEO of Visit Escanaba, and I'd like to thank Finance Committee for meeting with us yesterday regarding this agenda item. Who presented the committee with a great opportunity to activate county funds to help drive significant economic development in Delta County. A short-term loan will provide critical resources to the county's destination marketing organization during the peak of the tourism season so we can continue to drive business to the area at focal capacity. This is a win-win for the county as it will ensure more area marketing and the county will gain interest on the funds used for the short-term loan. The investment in the Northern Lights Music Fest has been amazing, resulting in over a 1,000% increase in website traffic, visitescanaba.com. This event will bring in millions of dollars to local businesses and increase the value of all of our marketing efforts now and in the future. This is an investment in our future. The market, the marketing our organization has done over the past six years has resulted in nearly doubling the amount of dollars area hotels are taking in every year and an increase of hundreds of short-term rentals in the area. We raise awareness about Delta County to travelers across the Midwest by creating content that features local attraction, and will reach millions of people every year. Please help us maintain this extraordinary path of success. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, very much. All right, next, is there Jared in the house? I hope I didn't butcher this. Jared?
Brown.
Brown, I apologize. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, Jared Brown of the Terrace Big Hotel. Speaking on the same issue here, this is a really exciting festival for any business owner in the community, and honestly, one of those things where in the first year, you'll learn a lot with something like this. I shared with Finance Committee my first year that I owned Sunset Lodge, the motel weeks unsold. We lost money, borrowed money, got through it, turned it into a profitable business. We're going to continue on and make a positive impact. Same thing with Terrace Big Hotel, we bought that, the first year we lost money, borrowed money, got through it, we're going to make a positive impact. And so, where do we see this event going in the future? This is the first year, but long-term, we'd like to make it a multi-day music festival type of that, you know, kind of like a Hodak Festival, something like that in Wisconsin. And we're just so blessed to have the Fairground Facility right here, and there's no reason that we can't eventually have another multi-day event that could eventually possibly rival the economic impact of the fair. And so, we just would hate to get shut down on the starting line and feel like this could be an opportunity to move this forward. Why is it a low-risk loan? Just to quickly break it down, our assessments, when Robert took over, were in the $300,000 some dollar a year range. The assessments are basically just the hotel tax. So anybody who stays in Delta County, they have to hotel tax. It's a Michigan state law. Since he's taken over, that amount's doubled, so we're in the $600,000 range of assessments. And that's because we're bringing more tourists to the area than we ever have before. And this isn't just benefiting hotels, it's benefiting all the local businesses and the whole community. And so, our expenses each year, when we look at our staff with Visit Escanaba and our support of the fair, is around $300,000 a year. We have $300,000 additional that goes into marketing the area. Pretty large amount of money that we're spending on digital ads and marketing Escanaba to the whole surrounding Midwest. And so, plenty of room there to pay that back, and we think this is just an awesome investment in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Happy Scott, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. My question to tonight is, oh, I should say what I was speaking on. I, I'm very lost about what you did in the beginning. I don't know what number it is. I'm speaking about the administrator's contract. My question is, what is the holdup on the contract for her? Why is it that Ms. Young still has no contract? It's been over two months since she was hired by the people's elected officials. Mr. Melner, Mr. View, you are both the Personnel Committee. What have you been doing? What's the reason that you have not fulfilled your duties? As appointed members of the Personnel Committee, it's your responsibility to take care of this in a timely and professional manner. Mr. View, I heard you say in a board meeting that you would support our new County Commissioner, Ms. Young, 100%. Two weeks ago, you and I had a short informal conversation with other present. When I asked you why Ms. Young still did not have a contract, you looked me straight in the eyes and stated that you had intended to hold up her contract indefinitely and that she had zero experience or qualifications for the position, and you held up your hand like that to me. Frankly, that was shocking to hear you say that. Do you support her or not? Which time were you telling us the truth? And which time when you spoke as a Commissioner, were you lying? Over two months is way too long to expect anyone in this position to work without a contract. Asking Ms. Young to work in limbo like this is unprofessional and reflects poorly upon our county and you, our government officials. Who would want to come to work in our county or be employed here? Furthermore, this temporary situation is costing we, the taxpayers, many thousands of extra dollars because you can't make a decision. Please, Mr. View, Mr. Melner, and all board members proceed tonight to give her the fair contract that she deserves, like any other person we've hired in the past. She's certainly more qualified than a couple I can think of personally. And now I'm confused about whether you're going to put this into closed session so that people cannot hear what you're doing? If that's what you voted on a few minutes ago, I'm unhappy.
Thank you. Some of these...
At the end, at the general public...
Oh, you want to speak under general public, huh? Well, that would be, that would be, is anybody else wish to speak? We're getting feedback from... Anybody else wish to speak, please, on agenda items? Going once? Okay, great. I'm sorry.
Oh, feedback. Thank you.
Oh, thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll take a break.
I was wondering where that buzz was coming in. So anybody wish to speak on the agenda items, please? You, you can have the floor for three minutes.
I'm just running the microphone.
Okay, going once. Public comment on agenda items twice, and that is now closed. Thank you for those of you who spoke tonight. We will, when Ashley gets back to the table, we'll have the administrators report and go to them.
I'm listening to it, I can hear fine.
You want the microphone?
I got one thing. Oops, sorry. For the Delta County Parks, I took a tour of all the parks in Delta County with Rory Matson and Commissioner Peterson. Rory was able to show me updates that had been completed by the park staff and the plans for additional projects to begin prior to resolving the many years of partnership with the Conservation District. I am pleased with what I have seen and know how fortunate we are to have Steve Wery on staff with his years of experience and knowledge of construction that have cut costs for those projects. I also want to thank the Conservation District staff for putting in time to make the parks as beautiful as they are now. If anyone hasn't made the trip to Sac Bay Park, the scenery is absolutely breathtakingly tranquil. Also, along with the Delta County Airport, I have an update. The Airport Advisory Board met this July 17th, so that would have been yesterday, to decide which company to extend the airport professional consulting services to. During, when I was writing the report, we did not know, but they had selected Need and Hunt. The Airport Board has also narrowed down the applicants to a select few. It would, it came down to seven. We had 17 applications for the airport manager position. The advisory board and myself had decided to form a hiring group to assist in the interview process. The group will contain of two advisory board members, one county commissioner representative, one member of the general aviation community, and one member of the airport tenants, along with myself. I was very impressed with the number of in-qualified individuals that had applied for the position. The order for proposal for the EAS for Delta County Airport was also released by the Department of Transportation on July 12th. The proposals are due August 22nd of 2023. The decision is ultimately made by M, or, I'm sorry, not MDA, but DAD. However, they rely on the recommendation by the Airport Advisory Board. Clerk Cesaraki just wants me to clarify, EAS is the essential air service, so that is our contract with Sky West. Landbank Authority, the Delta County Landbank Authority has received the grant funding through the State Landbank Authority's blight elimination program of $498,890. This grant will assist in the demolition cost of the old jail site purchased by the Terrace Bay Group. Thank you to the Delta County Landbank Authority and Treasurer Godfrey for approving the application from the Terrace Bay Group and Matt Consulting LLC. This week, the Sheriff, Director, and Maintenance, and ITA myself are meeting to discuss the plan to start the courthouse security project. As mentioned in prior administrative reports, we have the ability to apply for a grant that will assist with 50% of the cost, up to $120,000. I also, just before this meeting, received an update by our Maintenance Director who wants to report that 98% of the rope at the courthouse has complete. We are just waiting to finish on the skylights. Thank you.
Gentlemen, I would need a motion to place this report on file.
I need some motion, Dirk.
I have motion by Commissioner Peterson, supported by Commissioner Barron. Additional discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, that would pass. Personnel Committee Minutes of 6/26/23. Mr. Melner, do you have the report?
Uh, we met and discussed...
Sorry.
We did meet and discussed the contract for Ashley, and that's one thing that we had going on. Do you have anything else?
The process is a little bit time-consuming as far as we met, like Mr. Commissioner Melner said. We discussed changes, they were given to the clerk, they were written out. We proofread them again, again, they were sent out to the prosecutor. Me and Commissioner Melner requested a special meeting to get this taken out early, early July, right after the Fourth. The Commission's agenda didn't coincide with that, so now we're at this point in that contract. We were also, didn't have another meeting to go with the suggested language changes in the contract, not, not the substance of the contract, but proper professional language in the contract that was submitted by our law office, prosecutor's office, our weakness over the 13th, I think. That's what we're going into closed session about, to discuss implementing whatever suggestions she's putting to see if we're going to accept them, come back out here, discuss that process of what we felt was right, bring Ashley in on it, and move forward with it in her fault part to have it checked out properly, to make sure she's satisfied with it, along with us and the citizens. It's just time-consuming, so that's all I have to say about, we had a couple meetings on that.
Very well, we can give the minutes of the Finance Committee meeting from 7/17/23, and then we can just adopt both at once. Mr. Peterson, Mr. Barron, do you have any minutes or any, any report from the Finance Committee?
We met yesterday, and those items will be on the agenda, like, towards the end of the agenda, and are making motion to put Personnel and Finance Committee Minutes on file.
Support.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Barron, supported by Commissioner View. Additional discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those gentlemen would pass. We have time for a department head update... Um, we have, uh, time for, uh, department head updates. Are there any department heads, um, who wish to, uh, bring the commission up to speed on anything? Department, department head updates? Very good. We're moving on to, uh, orders of business, and I believe, since I get my large agenda on the whole business, and, uh, we have moved item number one from whole business to the end, and number two would be, uh, uh, the finalization of the decision of application to alter boundaries from Esquinaba and Corwell, Cornell Township. So I'll leave it up to the commission. Anybody wish to start? Mr. Barron?
Yes.
At our last meeting, we, uh, received it, and we did not receive it to, for review. I think the step that we take now is to, um, accept it for review, and that's going to take some time. I would suggest that we do that, and, uh, it's not a decision to receive it, uh, to, uh, accept the boundary change, but duties to, um, receive the application and to go over the specifics of it, uh, also for what every questions are raised, so that we can answer those questions. I would suggest that we, uh, do that, we make the motion to do that, and then we uh, look at this. It's going to take a lot of time to do this, and I would suggest that it's not come back to us any earlier than the fourteenth of, of August, if it's possibly done. As we received it and it hasn't had, uh, it's, it's part of the process, and we need to, uh, follow through on this process, uh, because that's part of our job, as you do. And there's a lot of questions that people have, a lot of, uh, unknowns that they presented, and the application for review needs to take place first. It's very similar to, in this part of the step, to, uh, a petition. As three of us are going to be experiencing a re- or in a recall situation now, those petitions will be turned into the clerk. Uh, they will be, uh, received formally. This is on the same basis. A lab, as far as that process is concerned, the go- the collection of application signatures is a different process. But the, um, in this part of the process, uh, we, as a commission, are, we have this review. Um, and more likely to have a, uh, probably a, uh, useful long-term, Mr. St- uh, St. Graham. Take a look at this and go to it, because there's a lot of things that have to be checked out. And then that'll be forwarded back to us, brought back to us. And, um, whatever questions, other things will come up during that process. We have the opportunity to look at those. It's a process that we need to do. There's, there was great deal of effort that was done for this. It didn't happen because some of you, uh, just felt the wind to do this. This was done because of the situation in Esquinaba Township with the, uh, severe restriction of people's property rights. And, uh, uh, the, the townships are not wanting to work with those people, but too restricted even more. That's why it's here, and that's why we need to do the proper thing, review. Again, I make a motion that we, uh, move on to have this review and, uh, not have it brought back to us any earlier than the fifteenth of August.
Gentlemen? Commissioner View?
A lot of tou- a lot of tough decisions are made for the people by our board. And I've had a lot of conversations with Commissioner Barron over the last, uh, month, and even more conversation with the people of the community, especially for my district. So this afternoon, I was wondering how I would respond to being prodded to support something. And I, I came up with a little statement I'd like to read right now, so everyone would understand where I stand. Originally, I thought it would be okay to follow Commissioner Barron's lead. Less government, more freedoms, individual property rights. Whether you're for or against annexation and commercial solar, which is the crux of why this is happening, the key is to look for the right balance. Defending this position on boundary changes against the multitudes I represent in District Two became unattainable for previous support. I have volumes of emails that shows that, as it is critical to the success and satisfying impact for my work as their commissioner. Even if I like to do this, I'm being prodded by the people I represent not to move forward with this. I need to have this effective working relationship that will not hurt my district now and in the future. So I, so I choose to not support annexation. And I also provided answers to questions regarding solar energy to change the minds on the advancement of this renewable energy from what was concerning to the community just a few years ago. I will continue to move for less government, more freedom for the people. I will be attentive to anyone in the audience or that is listening to what I'm saying who can clarify a fair way to have seven thousand different individual property rights without infringing on each other. Call it democracy, or as I've been told, mob rule. But this is the best that I can do at this moment. Thank you.
Anybody else, other commissioners?
Yes.
Mellner?
Uh, the reason this was actually put on the, uh, agenda was to actually finalize it, get done with it, and be over with it. Uh, we already voted to accept his application. That was a four-one vote. And then we had another vote, which ended the, uh, boundaries, which was the one to four vote. And now the final decision of this application is supposed to be finished tonight. And we had four, four votes already to end the alter boundaries.
And ask our clerk if it dies, if it doesn't get a second, it's over. Just, I just want to officially make sure it's over.
Uh, Nancy, with that, uh, once we say vote on this, and then...
No, if there's not second, is it, is it a dead issue?
Is it a dead issue?
Well, the, the motion to review it is, is dead.
Okay.
Yes. This...
What does that mean?
Yeah.
Can we have clerk...
Did you need your, could you, uh, speak to the mic, because I'm hearing grumblings back there?
The motion to review it would be dead, but that decision not going to review it.
Does that also, does that? It, it doesn't stop any individual from moving forward one way or the other, but does it stop this annexation application or boundary change application?
That's a legal question that I can't answer.
Okay. Well, well, that's what we were looking for tonight, either to move forward with it or, or to stop, uh, this legal proceeding.
To the best of my understanding, can you hear me back there without a microphone? Sorry. What I understand is that, uh, we have acknowledged receipt of the application. And, um, unless I'm understanding this wrong, the board decided not to do anything with it. Mr. Barron put a, a motion on the floor. He did not receive a second. But, um, under the advice of counsel of my own, the one person that I sought, I, I am concerned that this board has not accidentally stumbled into, uh, short, I'm not going to support the issue and it's killing me. It's bugging the hell out of me. But to those of you in this community who think I'm going to sell out and I'm being paid, um, keep hyping. I need to understand that we are not representing or putting the entity, Delta County, in harm's way by taking, is there a process that was circumvented and we are required to by law? And, uh, Mr. Peterson, did you check with, you check with legal counsel today on that, or did you? Somebody hand him the hair. Take this.
Yeah, yes, I, uh, spoke with, uh, Ms. Whitman today. And, um, she said that there are obligations, there are no obligations for us to review this. Um, and that, uh, it's up to the board to do what they want to do, but as far as, uh, sending this, keeping this on for review at a later date, um, we are in under no obligation to do that.
Okay, so we would not be circumventing a process or, um, putting the county in potential, uh, litigious situation by, um, shortcoming on a process?
Not, not according to, uh, uh, our presiding attorney.
All right. Is there any other comments, any, Mr. Barron?
Yes.
Please.
I'm still at a loss as to why the board does not want to, uh, review this because it has been, uh, brought forth by a, a large group of people, uh, to, to legal effort. Uh, and so not really serving the will of the people, as Commissioner View is prone to say. Because they did present this. You did see the signatures. You have those. It was properly, properly done. And why is it that we're not going to deliver it? That's part of our system, is to receive these things, deliver it, get the information. We're making decisions itself thoroughly, looking at the information. Uh, we, we're just superficially doing this. We're not going into the detail. Review would be going to the detail and make sure that it is correct. It could die out of its own merit. But we don't even want to do that. And we're anxious to kill it, but why? Uh, the, uh, the annoying to ending up the information could show quite rapidly that this may be a well, a very good thing to do under the circumstances that take place. This, this refers back to the very foundation of a nation, the right of Declaration of Independence. If you read the first two paragraphs, you'll find out exactly what took place, why, um, a group of people, a small group of people in the colonies, something less than ten percent, decided that, um, they had enough of what, uh, Great Britain was doing to the colonies and, uh, wrote the Declaration of Independence. The war for independence took place. Then they wrote the constitutions, two great documents. Uh, yet over fifty percent of the, uh, residents in the colonies at the time did not want to go, very similar to what we're seeing here on this board, actually, a higher percentage. And the, um, uh, but yet, the, uh, the ones who wanted to, uh, become independent, Great Britain prevailed in the war and then wrote the, um...
Please maintain quiet in the audience. He's got the floor. Please.
They can't, they're having trouble hearing.
Okay, you're having trouble. Could you increase your volume, so you... Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. Anyway, as we've, uh, seen here, if, if this, uh, this is exactly what, uh, is driven this to start with, uh, I've heard the name, uh, the word, solar being here. What solar did was present how bad the, the property rights had been infringed upon in the township. Now, that could have been corrected by the township board, but they decided not to. Um, and to actually double down and, uh, make it even more restrictive for people to use their property. It's not just the ones that, when you're looking at potentially a, a solar development, it's every, everyone's property rights were being infringed upon. They may not realize it, but they'll, uh, eventually, when they want to do something, it, uh, may well come back and bite them. And unfortunately, in Esquinaba Township, it is, uh, it is not equal. It's a very tyrannical system as far as what they do. Some, some is enforced on, some is not. And, uh, if you're, uh, not in good graces, you definitely are not going to be doing well in the township as far as using your property. That's been going on, not just for a few years, but going on for generations. So what we're, what we're doing here by not just reviewing it, specifically reviewing it, is we're saying that it's all right for, um, a governing entity of which we have some say here to, uh, abuse some of their property rights. Uh, that, that, that to me is absurd to do that, and yet we'll want to stand up and, uh, do a, uh, amendment, uh, to our, um, county situation where we, uh, sanctuary county, we have the constitution and the second amendment, but we che- we treat the constitution, uh, on this issue that it's a, um, uh, buffet. We only pick and choose what we want to stand up for. The rest we throw off. That is not what our job is. It is not what our oath of office is. Our oath of office is to uphold that constitution. That includes Declaration of Independence, which is the cornerstone of all federal law. And that's of all law across the country because of that cornerstone. And yet we're unwilling to uphold our oath of office here. We've decided that, uh, by the, uh, intimidation process that's come across over these last several months, it started basically in April, that we are, uh, we're, we're not even going to review this. We, we don't, uh, we don't, we don't have the intestinal fortitude to do what our job is here. We'll just ignore our oath of office. We'll ignore our constitution, but we'll come back and say, well, there's something else that we're working on. I'll be trusted. It's a simple thing of go forward and, uh, go through the process and let the process work its way out. Not be intimidated by what's been taking place. Yes, we've got a hundred and thirty, uh, people that said they wanted to name change. They've gone from door to door intimidating these people. You have the information, their state Supreme Court, after state Supreme Court, um, uh, deci- uh, decision on this, that those are valid signatures. And that this intimidation process has happened before. It's not only state Supreme Court, uh, decisions that, uh, publicly this, it's also, it was one US Supreme Court's decision. Yet you ignore even, uh, working on that. We don't even want to do it. We're just going to walk on. No, this is ridiculous. You're not doing the job here. You're not, you're not standing up for, uh, the rights of the people. You've got a bad actor in Esquinaba Township. It's well-known. It's been known for years. Yet your decision here is we'll, we'll put up with the bad actor, let them abuse a, a part of their population. We're not going to do anything about it, but yet we're going to come up with some, someone else that we want to do something for. And, and that's, reality is, that's not correct, and, uh, we're, we're alone. You're, you're no different than what the township is doing. We'll stand up for one, but we'll skip another. Like, I don't know, I, I, where, where, does this board have any courage to do its job or not? Because that's what you have right here. Yes, is it difficult to do something that's, uh, righteous? Yes. And that's what you're being called to do. You don't want to do it.
Mr. Mellner?
Okay, after that, uh, I'll make a motion to finalize the decision of application to alter boundaries of the Esquinaba.
Our, our material has a question.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. We need a second for it.
If nobody's second, it, it died.
But we have to, yeah, confirm that it...
Oh, it did.
Well, we never asked for a second.
Commissioner Barron made a motion. Is there a second to the motion?
No.
That motion would die without a second. All right, Mr. Mellner, you were, is anybody else want, uh, you have the fortress?
Uh, then I'll make a motion to finalize the decision of application to alter boundaries of Esquinaba and Cornell Township.
So your, your motion, please repeat your motion.
Not to alter.
Not to alter the boundaries of Esquinaba and Cornell Township.
I'll support.
All right, so I have, Commissioner Mellner makes the motion, uh, not to alter the boundaries. Commissioner View would second the motion. I would like to continue discussion if anybody else has any point of discussion. Um, the way I understood this, I took my vote, and this has been extremely difficult for me because I get along well with Mr. Barron, and I, I, I can't support a friend on this, and I have my reasons. But casting the vote on the twentieth, um, I, I have looked into this, and I've consulted legal counsel who told me that my, my first duty is to protect the entity, the council, or the, uh, the county. Um, anyway you cut this, somebody's going to get zapped, and their property rights are not going to be realized. Um, I, I think I am attending to my fiduciary duties, but it's, it's like eating a, a tainted sandwich. It doesn't, somebody's going to get a bad taste in their mouth regardless. And, uh, again, I, my mind was made up when I came to the meeting on the twentieth. It had nothing to do with a surly crowd. Um, I, uh, I deeply regret this situation. Any other? And I, it is, it is the constitution that, that caused me to vote the way I did. I thought that vote on the twentieth put this thing down. I did not want to spear anybody's nose into it. I still don't. But any other comments on this situation?
Right here.
Sir?
I don't know what constitution we're following, but this is definitely, uh, deliberation over something that's presented by the people. Law-abiding citizens follow the statutes. But the intimidation that's taken for it, the state can be right out this year, is something that you're supposed to be working on. Law-abiding citizens did what the, uh, uh... Law-abiding citizens did what the, uh, uh, the statutes allowed them to do in, uh, under duress situation, and yet your response is, they should be punished. So what, what can anybody bring to this board? This is, we have to decide which way the, which way the crowd or the mob wants to go, and then they'll skip, and then, uh, well, the people who, who follow the law are to be abused, they did follow the law here. Why don't we want to follow, um, the, uh, uh, following and doing our due process? They were expected to do our due process, something's brought before us because you find it unpalatable. You come here and say, as Commissioner Moyle has said, and I've heard it from the other commissioners previously, they made up their minds before they even received it. Wow, I mean, uh, so if you're gonna, if the general public's gonna bring something to the Dallas County Board, uh, understand this. It's not even gonna be reviewed if they, uh, because they made up their minds already before they even got the information. And did they review the information? Of course not, they didn't have any, uh, uh, need to because they already made up their minds. That's exactly what you've just said, and that's what the rest of the jury's likely here. The review should be done. And, uh, not just, well, just give it a run down the road. I mean, this is ridiculous. We're hiding from something that is fundamental to what our country is. If you four would have been here when the, uh, Declaration of Independence was written and those, uh, the colonists were, uh, were here, this country would never have been founded because you would have said, "We don't want to upset anybody, we'll take the abuse." It's ridiculous, you're not standing up for people here.
Can we, can we please maintain order?
Oh yeah, this is what keeps you in line, what they're doing in the crowd.
Can we please maintain order? Mr. Barron has the floor, I'm sorry.
This intimidation process is the very thing that these peop- that these landowners want to move from in Esconahua Township, this is their modus operandi. You've been exposed to it and you've fallen for it. They've been doing this for years, they, 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 uh, they've done it so long, they think it's normal, and you guys have accepted that as reality.
Any other comments?
Um, contrary to these, uh, I have my own mind, and I can think for myself, and I've talked to people, and I'm, I do feel that their rights are being trampled on, but everybody has their, uh, right to use their property and, and, uh, enjoy their property equally, and when, unfortunately, when you take and go against one group of people to satisfy another group of people, there's a no-win situation. And I guess the way I've weighed it out is, um, we're making a change that a lot of people don't want, they want to stay where they're at, whether it's good for them or bad for them, that's not my decision to make. My decision to make is whether it should happen, and at this point in time, um, you know, we've been looking at this for, what, a month and a half now? And, uh, I put a lot of thought into it, and as I said, I, I do feel that, uh, Commissioner Barron, um, should have the right to use his property as he should, as he wishes, however, so do the other people in the, in the township. And so that's where I base my opinion, it's not, has nothing to do with the so-called mob rule. Uh, although, we, we've got a lot of that in the last seven months, uh, without trying to intimidate in that, but, uh, in this situation, I've weighed it, and this is, this is my best way of trying to build up the constitution is to look out for everybody's property rights, and, and to make a change and take people out of, uh, force people out of, uh, a township that they've bought property in, intentionally bought property possibly in that township is just not right for me. Thank you.
Anybody? Anybody else, please? Mr. View?
One final comment. I'll always listen to the constituents. I don't call that a intimidation, just to let you know. It's, it's, uh, a balance of following along and what the community wants, and that's my stance. So be it.
Alright, no additional comments? I'm not gonna be accused of trying to stifle anybody's ability to talk in this commission.
Commissioner View, your view is quite often that, um, the will of the people, well, there's a problem with that. It's, um, um, what, uh, what will, what people? Is it goodwill or is it ill will? Now, we have Commissioner Peterson saying, uh, that, uh, he wants to stand up for all people's property rights, but yet, uh, has, has determined that, uh, he knows full well that this people's property rights are being terribly infringed by in the, in Esconahua Township. It's, it's selected for the most part, but it's a fairly big group right now, but, and others, and yet, uh, uh, he's standing up for all people's property rights. No, it's, it's, uh, goodwill or ill will. Apparently it's fifty more than ill will because you can do something about it here, there could be going through the process, um, as we would do the process, that there could be things that could be worked out, or we could negotiate things and get done, we don't even want to do that. Let's just say we're gonna dump it, and then we're going to go on and then, uh, uh, pat ourselves on the back for shafting a lot of people instead of doing our deliberation, which we have the opportunity to do. Totally, are we wanting to reject this, this motion in this second of this vote? Why don't you want to do your job? This is what we're here for, this is what this nation was set up for, was to protect the rights of all the people, not just skip out and, you know, it's to take care of the people. Yet, you're, uh, you come across, I want to protect all the rights except for these, these group of people. I mean, this is, uh, this is allowing abuse that you know about. Why? You could do something about it. We were given the legislative ability to do this, and we have a lot of, of, uh, motion or area that we can work in, yet you don't even want to go there. You don't even want to review it, you don't even want to read stuff, you don't even want to, uh, edit it in any way. Uh, it's, it's, this is, this is not governance. This, this, this is truly is mob rule, we don't want to do our jobs, we're just, whatever, whatever the mob wants to do, we're gonna do, and that's, here's be the case here, you just don't want to, you just, I predict it is, this is something that you're gonna be responsible for or, or known for, uh, as time goes forward. I mean, uh, Commissioner Peterson, you're in real estate, stand up for all the property rights. How can you, I'm gonna stand up for this individual's property rights, but I'm not gonna stand up for this one over here?
Guys, please.
This is wrong. This is absolutely totally wrong. Don't even want to do a review of this. Because are we afraid that if we do the review, we might find out that this thing is actually, uh, a very positive thing to do? It was put there for a reason. It was put there because of situations that have arisen. We don't need a War for Independence to be able to use our property rights, it's already built into our system. But if we don't have the, uh, intestinal fortitude to stand up for that, then we don't have a system. You said, oh, for it.
I call the question.
Alright, very good. Court Press Rocky?
That'll be a second.
We have a motion that we have a second on the floor. Alright.
Oh, we do have a second.
I, I call the question.
I understand that you need a second to advance that. Alright, so we have the question being called, it would be a unanimous, uh, decision needed, but all those in favor of, um, voting on the, go ahead. Uh, Peterson, Commissioner Peterson seconded the question being called by Commissioner View.
Or it has to be unanimous?
I believe so, but, uh, our parliamentarian can shed light on that better than I. So it doesn't have three seconds. Okay, very good, and, um, this is to call the question, we have a second, we have a motion, uh, those in favor moving to a vote, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Very good. Press Rocky, will you please, uh, initiate the vote?
Now, the, the vote here is for the, uh, not to alter the boundary.
Okay, you want, here's, you, you read the motion, this vote will be not to alter the boundaries of Esconahua Township or Cornell Township.
I just want to clarify that.
Alright, very good.
They're voting now.
Yes.
Okay, so, Mellner?
Yes.
You?
Yes.
Barron?
No.
Peterson?
Yes.
And Moyle?
Yes.
Alright, we are moving on to, uh, new is, is we have the payment of our bills. You need the mic?
Yes, please. I have examined all claims presented and recommend payment of the following, and that the county clerk be directed to issue orders on the county treasurer to the climates for the amounts allowed. Grand total of bills, one million, four hundred and sixty-nine thousand, two hundred and one dollars and ten cents. Commissioner expenses of one thousand, seventy-nine dollars and eighty-two cents.
We would need a motion to pay our bills, so move, move by Commissioner Mellner?
Second.
Supported by Commissioner View, additional discussion. Okay, roll call.
I, I have one question.
Very good, Mr. View.
Is there, is there, it's twenty-nine pages, I haven't had a chance to comprehend everything.
Alright.
I'm, I'm just curious, there were twenty-nine pages, I tried to sift through and at the last meeting I, I, I was looking for attorney fees outside of what was budgeted. Is there anything in here that is paying an attorney that was not budgeted? That's, that's a, can anyone answer that question?
Not to the best of my know, I, I don't.
I mean, I spent a lot of time going through there, and there's a lot of attorney fees, and I don't know if there was something that wasn't budgeted that's in here, and that's what I was looking at because I had comments from the public, they wanted to know if we paid any additional attorney fees that weren't budgeted.
I'm sure people were wondering.
I can comment on that.
That's what I.
We did not make any budget amendments or adjustments for any attorney fees, the only attorney fees that have been paid were for, um, district court, probate court, circuit court, that type of.
Scott Graham has not sent a bill to the county, nor does he intend to, so if, if somebody was curious about that, it's not coming to him.
No, that, that's not even close.
Alright, good.
What they were looking for.
And then, and then we did receive one attorney fee that would not be part of the court's system, but it was a personal issue.
Is that in here?
I do not believe it, it was in this hesitancy.
Okay.
I just wanted to know.
I think that's what they're looking for.
It'd be a transcarant.
I would need a roll call, please, Court. That we may pay, we have a motion, we have a second, and so we're just need to finalize by roll call.
Mellner?
Yes.
You?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
And Moyle?
Yes.
Alright, we will pay our bills. Uh, Title III project, uh, bid approval, Ashley.
We have our emergency director, Tom Guyer, that's gonna speak on this.
Good evening, Commissioners, um, back in February, the board approved moving forward with these Title III projects, which is from the Secure Rural Schools Act. Uh, it provides money to the county from, uh, land and timber sales in the Hiawatha National Forest. Uh, Title I provides money to the, to schools that are there, Big Bay to Knock and Rabbit River. Seventy-five percent of the total amount goes to them. Twenty-five percent of the total amount goes to, uh, the townships for road maintenance related, in relation to near the Hiawatha National Forest. And then, twenty-five percent, um, goes out to Title III as well, and Title III is the, the funds that, um, I manage or I'm in charge of for the county. Each year, we try to set aside, uh, or we try to establish projects. I re- I brought those projects in February. Um, we placed an act for public comment, that was done March sixteenth, we had to wait forty-five days, uh, there was no public con- uh, comment on the projects. Um, and after that, we issued RFPs on May twenty-second, they were due June twenty-third, and opened at one PM on June twenty-sixth by myself, uh, county administrator Ashley Young, and Tracy Langton from the admin office as well. There were, uh, a total of five bids for the three projects, three different projects. Uh, one bid for Ensign Townships Project, one bid for Garden Townships Project, and two bids for Masonville and Badenock. Masonville and Badenock are combined because Badenock, uh, receives their fire services from Masonville. Um, in the packet that I prepared, it lists the, the costs, uh, for those bids. The townships have reviewed those, uh, bids and, uh, recommending moving forward with, uh, with the proposals as they were presented. Ensign's Township, uh, bid cost was eleven thousand, one hundred and thirty-three dollars and four cents. Garden Township's, uh, bid cost was thirty-six thousand dollars for their project. And then Masonville, who by far had the biggest project, uh, in terms of purchasing a fire truck, their bid cost came in, uh, two bids, one for five hundred and ten thousand, one hundred and sixteen dollars, and the other one was approximately, I don't have it listed here, but it was approximately a hundred and twenty thousand over that, it was six hundred and something thousand dollars. Um, each township has one set aside, um, Ensign Township and Garden projects would both be paid for in full. Masonville's Township, uh, and Badenock have a total of a hundred and eighty thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars and ninety-four cents available to them for their project. Um, that would, um, maximize their amount that they have available, and the rest of the project is the full responsibility of the township. So I'm asking that the board approve these bids as they are granted by the townships, as summarized in the, uh, in this packet document that I prepared. And I guess I can ask any questions.
Yeah, gentlemen, do you have any questions? Mr. Guyer, by the way, we are very grateful to have your service. Anyway, Steve?
Now, I did review them quickly, and it looks pretty good. My question would be on the fire truck, the money that's going into that, does that time out? Or do they keep getting this every year to, till they get that paid, or do they have to pay the difference?
No, the Title III, the Title III county fund projects are supposed to be a single-year project. So next year, if we receive money for the Title III funds, which we will, they'll have to identify another project. If they want to buy maybe some equipment for the, for the fire truck, that could be a new project, but it, it doesn't go to pay off the rest of their balance. The rest of their balance on the truck is the full responsibility of the township.
Okay, so they're, they're, they're applying this to the fire truck and they paid the balance?
They are applying their money that they have available and the rest is their balance, correct?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, gentlemen, I would need a, a motion to accept, uh, Mr. Guyer's, yeah, move by Commissioner, you, supported by Commissioner Mellner, to, uh, to, uh, move and pass, uh, what Mr. Guyer's, uh, proposed. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That would pass, sir, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Have a nice night. Oh, you forgot about, oh, right, well, we're up to ratifying the Secure Rural Schools financial year twenty-three, you actually.
This program that I just discussed, uh, every so many years, they give a county the option on how they want to receive their payments. Um, there's two different, uh, payment allocations that a county can decide to, uh, to, to get from the federal government. One is twenty-five percent of the seven-year rolling average receipts of, uh, funds from the Hiawatha National Forest. And the other one is the actual Secure Rural Schools Act state payment. Um, the, the paperwork that, uh, Administrator Young provided to you in your packet shows that we currently select the second option that I mentioned, the Secure Rural Schools Act state payment. That money, um, at least from estimates in the past years, has supplied the county with more funds, um, but it details how we have to distribute those funds. Uh, Title I, again, for the schools and the township roads, Title III for county fund projects. If we were to choose the other form of payment, all of the money that the county receives is required to go to Title I. Um, we are a moderate, uh, what, what is considered a moderate, um, receipt, uh, distribution for the federal government, which is between a hundred, one hundred thousand and one dollars to three hundred and forty-nine thousand. which is between a hundred, one hundred thousand and one dollars to three hundred and forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars. We receive approximately, I think it's around two hundred and eighty roughly thousand dollars each year, um, in the, in the, in the SRS program. So if we were to do, um, if we were to do the other one, it, it, I think the estimate proved that it would be about forty thousand dollars less that we would, that we would receive and it would all have to go to Title I. So the county, um, I, I was recommending and the ad and Ashley agreed to just continue our Secure Rural Schools Act payment, in which we take eighty percent for Title I and it's distributed out by the treasurer. And then we take twenty-five, uh, percent and distribute that out to the townships for the county projects. So I'm recommending that you just affirm that decision, uh, made to the state and the federal government.
You would need board action, then?
Yes.
Just, just to clarify that. Just to clarify what you just said, is, is that money going into the county's general fund? Or is it just earmarked for the townships according to what was listed in, in your report?
It's earmarked. It's not part of the general fund. It has its own special fund. The treasurer, when she receives the date authorization, pays approximately, I think about a hundred, at least this last year, I think it was a hundred and seventy thousand dollars to the two schools. That is divided. And then the twenty-five percent of that main amount goes to the township for roads and then Title III projects.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Tom.
All right, gentlemen, I would need a, um, motion to, um.
So moved.
Move by Commissioner Bu.
Yes, reported. Support.
Yeah, supported by Commissioner Peterson to, uh, take, uh, Mr. Geier's, uh, suggestion and, uh, I guess just take, keep taking this as a check, apply for the money absolutely. Although additional discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That would pass and I think then I, thank you, sir. Have a good evening. That's it for you?
Okay.
Um, revised Delta County, uh, street and the naming and addressing policy. And, uh, who would be with support information on this?
We have our director of dispatch, Jen Peterson.
Welcome.
And assistant, Holly Book.
Good evening.
Hello. Um, the reason that we wanted to come back is that we had come to the board to get this addressing ordinance and policy. I believe it was last year, but when we were reviewing some of it, there were some omissions and I don't know where they happened, but we need to make sure that they're fixed. Um, some of the most important parts of the, uh, policy include, um, consistency for first responders. So basically, in, in a nutshell, what this was, the reason that this was brought about is because we had many addresses that we were finding throughout the county that were not adhering to our county grid. So when our first responders are trying to find addresses for emergencies, they were not able to locate them with ease because they were not, um, in compliance. So when we found them, we started compiling the list and, uh, just recognizing a real need to review our addresses throughout the county. These problems are many, many years old, um, but they've just compounded as the years have gone by. New, uh, properties have been added. So we just wanted to make sure that we had a very clear policy, that we had a plan moving forward so that once we went through the addresses, found some that were incorrect and, uh, corrected them, that this problem didn't sort of rear up again in a few years. So some of the things, I'm not sure if you guys, uh, have a copy of this. Tracy provided that. I have extra copies if anybody needs them of the policy and the ordinance. Um, what we did, um, is to, you know, in red with a line through it is the part of the policy and ordinance that, starting with the, um, addressing policy. Uh, in red with a line through are things that, um, were in place that we would like to replace. And then the green is, um, the update that would provide clarity. Um, we can answer any questions anyone has about why we wanted to make certain adjustments. But ultimately what it comes down to is clarity, consistency, so that when first responders go out there, able to locate people at the time of an emergency.
Commissioners, do you have any questions? I think you'll have a mic.
I always have questions. I was, like, once again, I did go through the packet with that information. Could you give us a brief idea what it would cost the citizens? Because everything I read in there, it would be your responsibility of the citizen to, to follow the procedure on placement of a sign, purchasing of a sign, if I, if I read it correctly?
So I can kind of walk you through how this all started, where the financial obligations lie and what, um, and where we are with.
And what the cost, the cost of citizen or each property owner, I think that would be important.
Okay, so this process of speaking to the townships, um, back when Emily was here, she and I went to every single township in the county. We explained what the process was and what we were trying to do. At that time, there was USDA grants that had come in out, that had come out that were going to assist with the cost of the addressing signs. So our recommendation to the townships at that point was to hold off on some of the signs. A lot of them were ready to move forward. Our recommendation at that time was to hold off on ordering their signs because we knew that there were a lot of changes that were going to need to be made because we had an extensive list. Uh, some waited and some didn't, quite frankly. I mean, and, and, and so, um, initially, um, again, going back several months, the communication that was put out was that as a township got to the point where they either had USDA funding or just township funding and they were prepared to move forward with that township, um, making the payment in whatever form that was going to be for the signs, that we, as the addressing committee, would then take on that township or add them to the list in the order in which they spoke up as being ready to move forward. And we would go through and review every single structure within that township to determine if it was previously addressed correctly, if it needed to be amended. Or, um, in many cases, there's structure that's on a, on a parcel that's never been addressed because it's not a primary residence. But as we know, if there's a fire somewhere, we need to have an actual address number so that we can locate it so that the first responders can get there quickly. Um, yes, they do. Also, the roads. There are several roads that are improperly named. So, um, to, to try to make this clear with the grid, um.
I was just concerned on the cost.
Yeah.
I mean.
Well, additionally, there's, there's roads that needed to be changed as well, um, in order to pay off the grid. So that again falls into things that were incorrect. So when township came forward, uh, we did, we're done with Cornell. Ford River Township came forward that they were ready. Escanaba Township came forward that they were ready. Uh, Cornell and Ford River are done. We're partially done with, um, Escanaba Township. And then Brown Lake is going to be prioritized next because, um, seasonally it's easier to get out there this time of year and there's some real problems up and around Lake. So that's sort of where we're at with it. We just want clarity moving forward.
Um, will, will you be taking care of roads that are M Road and M Road and then M Road? Or it's not, you know, M Road stops and it picks up again a mile away or two miles away or something?
So that, that is because it is falling in line with the grid. So, you know, there's a seventeenth road out in Burke River and there's one over in Garden Township, but that's because that's where it falls on that grid. So, you know, to simplify, starting with A on the west end, one mile for every letter. Starting with numbers on the bottom of our county, every mile up is one number. So that's where those, that's where those road names come from. They're either a letter or a road name, whether they're north, a north-south road or an east-west road. That would be maintained, but what we're hoping to clarify are some of the roads that, um, are sort of a winding road. So four twenty-six is a great example of this, where four twenty-six is the, is the prefix. And then the secondary part of that road name gives you where, where it lands on the grid. So it changes from a letter to a number, but it always has a four twenty-six prefix. So four twenty-six tells you which road you're on. That secondary part of that road name is going to clarify where it's landing on the, on the grid for our first responders. There are some roads where we don't want to keep changing the road name, but in order for them to be addressed correctly and using the numbers either from the top or from the side, it has to be correct. If it's, if it's running north and south, it has to be a letter. If it's running east and west, it has to be numbered. But if we give it a, a prefix, it's going to run the length of the road. And then we add something like it was done with four twenty-six, that will provide clarity for first responders. Um, you know, the thing that keeps coming up is that this is inconvenient for landowners and we completely understand that. But at the end of the day, as a nine-one-one dispatcher, taking a call from somebody that especially if you're in a situation with CPR in progress or some other sort of life or death emergency, I just can't think of a single scenario where convenience outweighs safety and that's really what it came down to for us.
One more little question. I, I drive in the Delta County all the time, bus driver, forty-seven years. Back in the nineties or eighties, I think, when I was driving, um, they did this road grid system. But they never, like, eight twenty-eight? I, I live on eight twenty-eight. Okay, you're the road commission guy. Forty-two ninety K road or eight twenty-eight? Which one are we going to go by? Are we going to implement? Like they said, we're going to go with the metric system worldwide or, and in school I had to learn road, which there's nothing wrong with it. But now, as bus drivers, I was told I had to learn the new road system, but yet they still keep the old road signs up there. Is that going to be phased out maybe in the next fifty years or?
No, those, those signs that you see, like the eight twenty-six or D five or the C twelve, those are designated by townships. Um, those are the road commission's designations for, for how we locate and how our, um, that, that's how we locate our roads. That's how we are designated. That's how we're registered within our Act fifty-one. So that's how the system is set, set up within our system. When, basically got pulled into this, it was a whole new animal because we don't use the nine-one-one system. So it's kind of a learning curve and, uh, because we know, um, many of the structures, all of the roads, a lot of locations, a lot of things that they don't know about it is kind of a good fit that we help them.
Any other questions, gentlemen?
They can answer your questions if you want. Um, every township is going to be different. Um, we found, I think we came up with a hundred and fifty-one issues in Cornell Township. A lot of those were, um, street length, street numbers. Um, so those, those won't directly affect, um, the homeowner itself. That won't affect the township. Um, home, there was probably a twenty-five percent of the number of issues we had in Cornell that were, that were actually home, home number issues. And we found a fair amount that there actually was no number at all established for dwellings. Um, as you go through, um, some of the townships, I think you're probably going to be looking at anywhere from forty thousand to a hundred-plus thousand dollars for, for some of the township. It's going to depend on how many issues there are in each one of the townships.
I, I was just concerned about people not paying for it, you know?
I think one of the other things that we had discussed, and I'm not sure if the board ever took action on, was, um, when a new address is requested for a new structure, if that could be part of the permitting process so that the property owner is responsible for the financial and cost involved with signage, uh, you know, where it should be.
Yep, that's, that's great.
So you're up here for item five as well, the next, the ordinance?
Correct.
Very good. Why don't you just dovetail right into that?
Right. So in the ordinance, there is very few, uh, changes. It's just basically, uh, we met with Jack and Sandy. We worked with them, um, consistently on this for building and zoning. But since this entire process used to be just their responsibility and now it's shared, um, with the, with the entire group that's doing, that's considered the addressing committee. Um, it would just involve nine-one-one and the road commission. So there were just a couple of adjustments there. Um, sort of addressing that change from just taking the responsibility from building and zoning and making it the responsibility of the committee as a whole.
Okay, so we would, uh. We would need a motion to, uh, accept the revised ordinance.
I'll move.
And policies. So we have a motion by Commissioner Bu to, uh, accept the revised, the revisions on the ordinance and the policies.
I support.
And supported by Commissioner Peterson. Additional discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That would pass. Thank you for your, your help and your service. All right, item number six is a resolution of the U P Triple A, um, twenty-twenty-four annual implementation plan for services to the elderly.
Is that that fifty-three page one? Bob, is that that fifty-three page one?
Yes, that it is.
All right, so we, um, this is the wrong camera. Well, who has the spot?
I have.
Okay, very good. You have the mic?
I have mine. All right, this plan and the resolution is a continuation from the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-five multi-year plan for services that was submitted last year. This continuation aligns the services that would be provided to seniors sixty years and older in the Upper Peninsula. This plan has been approved by U P A A and U P F board and submitted to the state for approval. They're requesting a formal letter of the multi-year plan and a resolution for, and I'll be going through.
So we would be sending them a letter and, uh, sending a resolution to support?
Uh, just the resolution. Please submit the letter to us and then I'll give you your permission.
All right, so I would need a motion to, uh, to resolve.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Peterson.
Or.
Supported by Commissioner Melner. Additional discussion? Anybody? Mr. Aaron?
Uh, commissioners, have you read this at all? Commissioner Peterson, you were on, you're on the U P F board, uh, and it was unanimously passed through the, uh, say the chief motor court. And did you read, uh, what this, what this entails, this long-term plan?
May I have a mic?
Oh, I have.
We need a mic.
Yeah, we'll pass one off. All right, pass this stuff.
I would have to, uh, look at this again, but I, uh, I was not, I had to read early on the last meeting. So I, uh, I think I missed this as far as voting on it and hearing the vote.
Were you privy to a lot of the stuff in there prior to the rating of this or not?
No.
Okay.
I, I got to the last meeting. I was there for about half hour, forty-five minutes and I had to leave to go to another meeting.
All right, will that, uh, is it down?
Yeah, it's up.
Okay, there it is. Um, uh, if you look on your, uh, iPads, starting really in, uh, page nineteen. Um, it's under, uh, it says approved, uh, M Y P. It's multiple, must be multiple year program. Program development objectives and under instruction. Uh, it's looking at here now. It says for the diversity, equity and inclusion, we need on it, the ACLS is to be under instructions, the second set of lines. Uh, the ACLS, ACLS, whatever that is, Bureau Operating Standards for the, uh, Triple A organizations across the state. And it was a little further down. It says, please refer to the operating standards for Triple A, which is the, um, let's see what it says. Area Associate, uh, area agencies for aging and, and, uh, U P Upper Peninsula area agencies for aging. It goes on and says, section C two and C four along with the document library for the ACLS Bureau. Training completed on the way to diversity, equity and inclusion within aging services across Michigan. Now, if you're not familiar with, uh, diversity, equity and inclusion, um, you may be familiar with critical race. This is where they're coming from. And this is what's been, it's been, it's being imposed here, uh, through the, um, this aging group in all fifteen counties. That's U P F upgrades in all fifteen counties. So, and unfortunately, what that is, is the, uh, continuation of, uh, racism. Uh, basically it's, it perpetuates the, um, contempt or hatred for God, country, family, and especially, especially straight, white, Christian men. And this is what's, this is what we're, uh, looking for a resolution to back this up. Uh, it, uh, goes on further in this. By, by sentence, it's, uh, increase the number of Triple A staff, providers, caregivers and volunteers trained in implicit bias. Cultural differences and root causes of racism. Well, this is a perpetuation of it. Well, this is a perpetuation of it, and why is it being imposed upon the Upper Peninsula? This has been going on for a long time. You can ask that question, I used to be a member on the UCAP board, and attempted to ask the question, I was fired. In attempting to ask the question. Because this has been a modus operandi that's been going on for a long time. This isn't, this is really a Marxist-based situation.
Folks, I need it quiet in the audience. Mr. Barron has the floor.
Because it does not follow what we are about. It perpetuates, as I said, it perpetuates racism in order that we continue to have it. And this is not something that we should be supporting in any which way. And, you know, this is, this is, like I said, it's condemning that, because God is not for this, you know, they're promoting an LGTQ plus agenda, that they say they are, they increase services provided to Black and Indigenous, people of color, LGTQ seniors serving their region. If you reach for this document, and if you're basically a white man, you're not really, and not fit these things they just read, you're on the wrong tour of court here. Because equity, diversity, equity, and inclusion, they don't use equality, that's what our Constitution uses, that's what our Declaration of Independence uses, they use equity, they dodge it. You can ask the question, why are you using equity, not equality? It's not about equality, it's about shifting this, shifting the life of a particular segment of the population, so they can perpetuate these things, and it's a dividing conquer. So I would not support this in any way whatsoever. This is wrong, this is not part of who we are, but it's perpetuating the problem. And if perpetuating the problem, really, we probably wouldn't exist if there wasn't this kind of organizations that would perpetuate. You know, we just went through gay pride in my class one, and I, you know, unfortunately heard some of the champions of the demonstrations, or the demonstrations so much as their celebrations and their marches, and it was particularly frightful to hear the one that was, we're here, we're queer, and we're coming for your children. That should send fear through every parent there is, and every grandparent, who, that they, right out publicly advocating the pedophilia. This is ridiculous. We have this going on as a society, we need to stand up and say we've had enough of this. Because this is not who we are, this is not, this is an ancient bond upon God, not upon Sodom and Gomorrah. You know, we, I look at what they're putting forward here, it's wrong, it needs to be stood up, and it is being stood up in other parts of the country. And we need to be able to take our stand here. This has been implemented for a long time by UCAP, by the faculty. They're embedding it, as you said, embedding it, it's part of the foundation, it is who they are. And everybody's gonna be forced to take the training, but they have been taking the training, and the first time it's said also here, the board members, and Commissioner Peterson, I have a joy of having, being a part of that, but we need to stand up to this. It's being done in other areas of the country. Do we have, you tested before, did we do it on this board? Thank you.
I didn't catch that. I'm not gonna support DEI, I can support UCAP, but I think anything that, what Mr. Peterson was just talking about, diversity, equity, inclusion, the critical race theory. So I don't, what is, is this requiring a resolution from the board?
Yes.
Do you have the writing in it?
Mm-hmm.
I don't think Mr. Barron is out of order as far as throwing down a gauntlet and not wanting to support this. The critical race theory, in my opinion, is counterproductive to this county's good future, but if I can't really sit up and holler, because I missed it, you agree, good eye. What's your opinion, board?
Well, my opinion is, it was fifty-three pages, seventy hours to look at it. I did see them, some of them statements in there, but there was a lot of other good stuff in there that needed me to look at longer in order to make a decision. I was relying on our representative to give me some support, but as usual, like me, sometimes I miss meetings, he misses meetings, we have busy lives, and there's seventeen people on this board, is there? Throughout the whole UP? I would, I would look at it at supporting it on its context of what it does for our citizens, and then over the next year, I would be looking at what it entails in details. As far as them different groups that you talked about, I'm not, I'm from the fifties, it's kind of new to me, and even in my family, I have a lot of people that have, I have married wives and husbands and stuff like that, and I do have a great understanding on how they feel towards other people looking at them differently, and talking with them, and they're very successful people in the United States, relation that I have, that have great jobs, and their bodies just fit right with what their stereotype was. So I don't have any issue supporting something that seventeen people of the UP had come up with a document, and I'm sure it wasn't just done overnight, and how many years is this for? Do we, Bob, Commissioner Peterson, I mean, Barron, did you, it said multi-year? I'm just curious.
It says multi-year, but multi-year, year, twenty-three, and then going forward, they keep adding pieces to it, so you add more years to it, but?
Well, I'm just looking for a definite, you know, two years, three years?
No, this is a continuous, continuous, they do these things where it's a multi-year plan, and then each year, they add another additional year to the county years that they're going to do.
Indecent. Not then lucky, but does that come back to the board every year, then? Is what I'm looking at, does it come back? Because, you know, I would need more time, but I would support this document as presented by, for the UP that has some type of representative from the county.
Commissioner View? The multi-year plan is for fiscal year twenty-three through twenty-five, and then annually they bring back.
Okay.
Yep, so you're correct.
I guess, because I didn't have time to look at this year, and I was not, I don't believe I was president, brought up at the meeting, I would ask to table this till the next meeting, and we can do a little more research on it, bring it back up.
All right.
I would make that motion.
You have a motion by Commissioner Peterson to table this till the next meeting, till we get more time with it? Is there support to that?
I'll support.
I'll support, I'll support the discussion.
All right, so we have a motion to table it to the next meeting, and we have a second for discussion, additional discussion.
On the cover letter we have here, and it's either, identify what page it is, might be page two or three, but it says right here in the second paragraph, although your county is not required to take any action of the plan, if you choose to support the plan, I propose a sample resolution. We ask that you return the resolution before July twenty, twenty twenty-three, so that we may forward based to the ACLS. I would, on the discussion, suggest including the motion and changing the motion to, with not supporting.
How critical, you know, time is essential for a lot of stuff like this, so I'm not privy to how important this is. By your statement that you just put there, Commissioner Barron, does that mean they don't need any decision by us, but we're just giving our blessing? Is that what that means?
That statement is in your material, I just read what they have, yes, now they is, they, they.
We give them our approval, or we don't give them our approval, that's what takes place. They bring these things up, and unfortunately, these boards tend not to see all this, just as we are demonstrating here, we haven't read all this material, because five of us, I picked up on it, when I was on the UCAP board, I picked up on it, and I asked questions, I tried to ask questions, and brought the ire down to the CEO there, just attempting to ask the question. And it showed that the board had gone along with this for years and had not read the journals. There's a trust that generally goes in, and unfortunately gets violated, and the year that it came up, which was in twenty twenty-one, I tried to ask questions, was, as I said, was not really allowed, was hammered on, and when this was approved, the minutes on the third quarter of twenty-one, it was in August, late August of twenty-one, when the minutes were being approved, I asked again to have this explained, and was not well-received with that, so in that, in approval of minutes, I made it clear that if you're not going to explain this, I don't support this. And because of that, I guess I have the distinction of being out of those fifteen regions for the area agency for aging across the state, which you have at least seventeen board members, and you have the executive committee, at least seven, so there's a lot of people involved in twenty twenty-one. There was only one no vote in the entire state. So this has been slow-jobbed on the people for a long time. You know, I mentioned earlier about the gay pride situation month that we had last month, and that chant that went across the country, we're here, we're queer, and we're coming for your children. What they're doing here could be a slight modification of that, we're here, we're queer, and we're coming after your elders. This is ridiculous. It should make every person shudder that's in that other, other elderly zone. This needs to be, it needs to be held up, yeah, they can laugh all they want, but I'm not the one that's gonna be doing the judging.
You're out of order in the audience, please. The time for general public comment is coming up shortly.
Anyway, I would, Commissioner Peterson, if you, I would withdraw my second and change the not supporting this whatsoever.
And I want to bring one thing up, since I spearheaded this, when Commissioner Barron was removed from that board, I, I don't care if you like him, I don't like him, he's not a homophobe, xenophobe, racist, or sexist, I have never seen evidence to that, and we unanimously passed a resolution indicating that. And I don't think you're out of order on this, I really don't want to support something that's got DEI in it specifically. That doesn't make me a homophobe, xenophobe, racist, or sexist, I'm not homophobic, but I don't, I didn't, I'm guilty, I didn't catch this, I'm sorry. What is your pleasure? Do you want to, you want to table it to look into it, or do you want to simply make a statement? Or do you want to pass it? It's a few gentleman.
If I may?
Yes, sir.
Is there a way that we can write a resolution that would support this? Because the aging, you know, they need, they need the support, is there a way we can write this, that resolution, write the D E I?
Well, I think you could probably have a resolution saying we would support this with the exception of DEI.
I would be in favor of that. The whole thing is not powerful. This has been slipped under the radar of people, and it's been brought forth. You, Commissioner View talks about, well, there's all these quote good things in there. You know, we can go back to the days of the fascists, and they built great roads, they had an incredible organization. A former president, Franklin Delano Roosevelt, sent people over to shadow them about how they ran their government, but they also killed thirteen million people in the death camps. The dark side is what we need to be concerned about here. They hide it, try to hide it with the so-called good things, but the area agency for aging is a welfare program. And they're using it to subvert the people, they're very good at it, and we need to realize, when all these things were taking place in the former Nazi Germany, it was going on, but yet they pulled the wool over the world for quite a period of time, until they decided that the Germans were gonna conquer the world, and then the world started waking up. But we have had this wool over our eyes for a long time, and we can start waking up in our local communities. This is deeply embedded, it's not someplace else, it's here. If we don't do anything about it, guess what? Nothing's gonna happen.
Thank you.
All right, gentlemen, so we have a decision to make. Go ahead.
I'm quite a member of here, because I know the work that UCAP does for the aging, and I believe it's very important, and I believe that they do a very good job. I do not support the DEI, but I, I don't know where to go. Like I said, I support their work with the aging. The work that they do, UCAP and community action is phenomenal, and very much needed. So I'm, I'm.
Would you be, would you support tabling this, so we can look into this more and find an appropriate response?
I would support it, and I brought that up.
All right.
Yep, I have a comment.
We have a motion out there already, don't we?
We have a motion and a second, unless it was withdrawn.
I have a comment, though.
All right, ask, go ahead. Let's get her a microphone, hold on.
Just because the motion on the floor right now is to table this, I just want the commissioners to be aware, it states within this plan, if the A A does not receive a response from the county and our local unit of government by July twentieth of twenty twenty-three, the AIP is deemed passively approved.
That's stated right now, the letter, the cover, which I read.
Yep, page eight.
Well, page eight also, it's written in the cover letter in the beginning, that's where I read the approval. Yeah, if we don't, if we don't approve this tonight, and we wait, it doesn't matter.
It's approved in abstention.
In abstention, so why put our name on something that is casting darkness at our communities? If I may?
Yes, sir.
As I said, I support this for the aging, but I had a problem when this first started, when I first sat on this board, the things that come in, at the last minute, we get no time to review them. And this is one of those things, at the last minute with no chance to review it. We kind of made a policy that we, early on, that we look at things one week, or one meeting, we pass it off to the next meeting, and we go down to the next meeting. And I guess that's kind of where I stand, I put that out right at the beginning, and we did put a policy on it, so that's where I would go.
So that policy obviously was financial, but you're talking about not having enough time to support it then for this meeting?
That's what I'm talking.
All right, very good.
Can I?
Yes, sir, go ahead, Mr. View, go ahead.
This was given in the normal packet, correct? This is coming tonight, like we have four high items that just came in tonight that I have no knowledge on, but I'll receive it. So this is the normal procedure for submitting documentation for us to review, and like I said, I skimmed through it, fifty-three pages. I'm willing to trust the people that wrote it, the fifteen counties, and move forward with this resolution of support of our county for this department on aging. That's where I stand right now.
Well, I thank you, Mr. Molder.
I do support what Commissioner View just said, you know, UCAP's been around for many years. for many years. Uh, they've done huge, huge things with the elderly and you got two-on-one phone calls out there. It's just unbelievable stuff that, the help that they have out there. So I, I would, uh, Commissioner Bu and would support this.
For the record, I support Upcap wholeheartedly. I think they do God's work. I do not support the D E I. And, um, maybe we need to sit down with Upcap and have a conversation. I will not throw you under the bus regarding this because I, I, um, I cannot support this with D E I in it. You want me to make a donation to Upcap? That's fine, but not everyone is going to come along to get along. So let's, uh, do a roll call on this, please.
As to what?
All right, spin. The motion, do you want to support the resolution? Do you want to? No, no, I'm sorry. I, we can't do that. We have a resolution. We have a, I apologize. We have a motion on the floor and a second to table this. That's the current. Do you want to maintain that motion on the floor? Yep, sorry, withdrawing a second. Okay, Mr. Barron withdrew his second. So then we have a motion to table, a motion to table this scuttled.
Then I will withdraw my.
Okay, so there's a motion. So we have an open floor.
Can I make a motion that we not, uh, do this resolution? Uh, as it's only two days before the, uh, whether we have this or not. Why should we put our name on this?
Well, it's gonna, if we don't, it's gonna get put on for us.
That's right. But it's, well, it's going to be put on without a resolution. As we're drawing points, it's given the resolution, uh, we've snowed down with another, another board, another bunch of people, seventeen or about sixty. Uh, Commissioner Peterson wasn't there, went right over this and they've been doing it for years. When it's pointed out, uh, they, they get rid of the individual that's on the board. They speak with experience.
All right, so, um.
My motion was not, was to not pass this resolution.
Move by Commissioner Barron to reject the resolution based on D E I?
I don't think he said that.
Well, I think that's his logic, but I mean, he's pregnant.
No, I just, I, I.
No, he said everything.
Not to support this resolution.
That's what I just said. I apologize.
No, D E I.
I'll support it.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Barron and we have, uh, support by Commissioner Peterson. Yes, thank you, sir. Is there additional discussion?
Clarification.
Yes, sir. Go ahead. Go into clarification.
Clarification, if I vote yes or no, what's it mean? Because it's kind of confusing right now. If I vote yes, I'm in support, not supporting this.
I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth, okay? Because I, if you support, if you support Commissioner Barron's motion, we would be voting not to pass this resolution.
So it would be no?
We would be rejecting it. So if you vote yes to what Bob just moved.
You don't understand what he's saying?
If you vote yes, you're agreeing with Commissioner Barron. If you vote no, you're not agreeing with.
Okay, that's, that's, I just wanted.
I was trying. I just wasn't getting to the base. I apologize. I'm a hell of a time.
Well, no, there was a lot of discussion.
No, it's, okay, um, do we have a roll call?
Sure. Melner?
No.
Bu?
No.
Barron?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
And Moya?
Yes.
All right, very good. Next up, we have, um, the resu- okay, we have, uh, S. Morgan, job transfer request to fill the enforcement clerk position.
Just normal business.
Would we need, uh, board action to, uh, to fill this?
Yes.
Okay, so gentlemen, I would need a, uh, a motion to, uh, okay, we have, uh, very good. I have a motion and I have the support. Move by Commissioner Barron, supported by Commissioner Bu. Additional discussion?
That's to fill, uh, the enforcement position.
Correct. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. That's going to pass. Item number eight is a registrate, uh, excuse me, the resignation of, uh, K. LaFave and, uh, to fill the deputy civil clerk position.
How move that we, uh, fill the deputy clerk post that position?
We have a motion by Commissioner Bu.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Melner. Additional discussion? Can we get this person a, a letter for thanking them for the service?
Yes.
All right, very good. Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. That would pass. Item number nine is a request to donate sick leave.
Just need a motion to approve the, um, request for donating sick leave.
Something.
Okay, so Commissioner Melner is going to make the motion. Commissioner Barron will support. Additional discussion? All those in favor of, uh, sick leave donations signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, that would pass as well. Item number ten is out of county travel for the M D A R D Rural Leadership Summit.
Can I have the microphone? I'll speak about that. Thank you. This summit is being held in Mutissey, Michigan, and it's going to, uh, it's the rural development summit for leadership. And I would just like approval to send a representative of Hamilton County to Mutissey.
All right, I need a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Move, uh, move by Commissioner Peterson. Oh, thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Peterson. We have a second to Mr. Peterson's motion. Supported by Commissioner Barron. Additional discussion?
Yeah, yes, I have a question. Uh, Ash, Ashley, uh, who would you find in the second?
Um, with rural development, I believe would be Commissioner Peterson because he's been leading in the housing development. Is that, is that, is that what the board pleases?
Would be fine by me.
Would it be fine by Commissioner Peterson?
I don't know. Will it be fine by you?
Yes, it's fine by me, yes.
Okay.
All right, very good. We have a motion. We have a second. Additional discussion? All those in favor of approving out of county travel signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That would pass. Thank you. Okay, number eleven is the department update on the agendas.
Um, that is.
You need the mic?
Yep, I would need the mic. Sorry.
Sorry.
So this is just a clerical housekeeping issue. Under, um, number three in office department updates, they need to list all our departments on the agenda. Administration is asking to remove items A through I. Not that the departments cannot come up and speak. It's just we're getting into four pages of agendas, four pages long for our agenda.
More of a housekeeping technique?
Yeah. So it gives the opportunity for our department updates to come in, but they're just not listed here.
All right, I, we need a motion on this issue. Move by Commissioner Barron.
I'll support.
Supported by Commissioner Peterson. Additional discussion, gentlemen?
Yes.
Thank you. Please go ahead.
I, I have said this numerous times and, um, we don't, still don't get, get it, but, uh, it's, I think it's very important for departments to come up and, uh, uh, give updates to us so we know what's going on. Um, you know, we, we put this time aside and we don't have time to go to each department head and say, hey, what do you need? What's going on? It's much easier if they come here and, and speak to us here. So I would, I would, uh, I will approve shortening, taking these out, but I would still like to, uh, encourage department heads to come in and give us talk from time to time. Not all the time, but once a while.
Go ahead, please, Nancy.
So department updates will remain on the agenda. Just the list of all the departments will be taken on.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we'll, we'll be, we'll be department update.
Give me the agenda, please. Okay. All right, Commissioner Bu.
Personally, I'd like them on there. I mean, it's not funny because if I was a new commissioner or somebody new in the audience that never came through a meeting, it would be nice for them to recognize these different departments. I think format again, it'd be two lines would save a little bit. As far as being four pages, it's not always four pages. And this, I think, is always an important part and it reminds me that when department updates are listed as part of our procedure, I can look here and see exactly who we have at all times. And that's just my own personal preference. I, I, I like it on them.
As long as we're on that, uh, I'd like to add something to the agenda and somewhere around, uh, after pledge allegiance or roll call and if any commissioner has a conflict of interest, he should excuse himself.
That would be a, a change of the rules and procedures.
That we did at the beginning of the year?
We would have to put it, I mean, um. What we would have to do is amend our rules and procedures in order to do that. Um, and I'm not taking a stance one way or against or for. I'm just letting you know functionally. So, um, okay, so we have a request by administration. We've had, has anybody got a chance to speak on this issue?
Commissioner Bu, um, I think, uh, your concerns, I think would be alleviated by when there's, um, apartment, uh, department updates that individually identify what department it is. I think that would clarify that to not only for yourself as a commissioner and others, but also in the audience.
Okay, do we have, I forgot, do we have a motion on the floor? We have a motion on the second. All right, very good. Additional discussion? If not, uh, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, very good. So, uh, for one, this item will pass. Um, and now we have to go into a closed session on, uh.
If I may?
No, I'm, I apologize. All right, what do I step into now? All right, we will take a five-minute recess to use the bathroom and whatever else you may need. All right. But it's not an executive session. I misspoke. I apologize. Very good. But we're still going to take a five-minute recess. So we'll get some. Ladies and. Hello. Hello. Ladies and gentlemen, can you please return to your seats? We would like to call the, uh, commission meeting back to order. If you start heading back towards your seats, please.
Okay. It seems reasonable.
I think it's a very reasonable request. We should have probably done that at the beginning of the meeting, but I think it's a reasonable request. Okay, um, we have requests by one of the commissioners to, uh, switch general public comment before we would go into a closed session.
And we'll still have an app there if anyone's here. We still have a few issues to deal with.
We have four separate issues right now, look, um, that I put on. We are back in sessions. Okay, and, uh, the first of the add-ons to the agenda was the finance committee minutes of two seventeen twenty-three. Uh, is there a report on those?
The minutes have already been accepted.
Okay, the minutes have been accepted. So we're done with that one. Okay, the stipend for the building and zoning assistant. We're done, I think, with one mic. Uh, the stipend. Oh, no, we're, we're squawking there. Uh, stipend for the building and zoning assistant administrator.
It was brought to the attention to administration that one of our employees was performing duties outside of her job description and for that she would like a five hundred dollars stipend for the past services and she will be no longer doing those duties before. The duty that was being performed had to do with the plumbing mechanical inspector. This was posted as a full-time position, but we hired a part-time individual. That part-time individual spent most of his time in the field performing these inspections instead of actually entering in the inspection into our B S and A, um, database system. So our administrator, our assistant administrator was entering these in, which is not part of her job description. And once we hire a full-time position, we will not have this issue temporarily between Jack Smith, who is our building and zoning administrator, and administrative office will be entering these plumbing and mechanical inspections going forward.
Commissioners, do you have any, uh, questions?
Is, is this customary and are we going to be other, um, employees requesting the same thing in the future? Is there a policy on this? I mean, I, I don't mind doing it. I'm just saying, is this the first time we ever did it? And what rules are we going to follow by in the future? That, I was just curious.
We just recently approved a stipend for another department.
Where?
Airport.
I'm optimistic.
Sir. Um, sorry, Commissioner. Uh, we just answered some of your questions. You know, we, we have approved stipends in the past. Uh, we did approve. You're asking some, I think, good questions that are commonsensical. Uh, we just approved one for the airport manager because they had no assistant manager and so it was a different amount. And I, I can't remember the specifics, but, um, what set of policies or guidelines would we have here too? I think it's a very good question.
Okay, that, that was a man.
The hell was that?
Sorry, go ahead.
Okay, I.
Must be your feelings, Steve.
Now I'm turning red. I, I, I can accept that. Uh, the others, uh.
Try this one. This is, that one's disaster.
That, that, that.
That was for department heads, not for, uh, subordinates, employees, you know, groundskeepers, clerks, stuff like that. That's a, a different realm. I'm just saying, I don't want to open up something that all of a sudden over the next five or six years when people say, whoa, I looked at my job description. I've been doing this for six years and it ain't part of my job description. Can I get compensated for it? I, I'm just bringing that to the table.
Duly noted, yeah. Commissioners, anybody else? Mr. Peterson?
Nope, I'm fine.
Ashley, what is your, uh, recommendation on this? You need a motion, obviously. We do, uh, do we have a motion on the floor?
So move.
Move by Commissioner Barron.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Commissioner Peterson now, additionally. You are out of order, please. Please, you are out of order, ma'am. I, I can't address that right now. You are out of order. Please do not, we can discuss this soon, I hope, but I can't keep going back and forth with you.
I believe, Dave.
Yeah.
I believe that this is one of those situations that we, like they were saying, that we got to put this to next week, to next meeting.
So, all right, if you want to rescind your motions, that, that, and the motion to the second, and we want to table, we can do that.
I, I will rescind mine.
Uh, very good. So as per, and you're not wrong in the audience by saying that, David, I think you've got to try to keep things moving in the, so based on our own financial policies point, uh, we're going to have to put this off to the next meeting. So is, is motion even, is, is tabling it even needed? We just would take.
Yeah, let's stable it. I, I'm old that we bring this up at the next meeting.
All right, so this is, uh, motion by Commissioner Bu to table.
I'll second.
Supported by Commissioner Barron. Additional discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, this is tabled until the next meeting. All right, uh, the next item is, uh, a visit. Is it asking out a loan? Give a backup on that, please?
I will.
I, I, I would just like to make the comment that we had three people speak at the beginning of the meeting on, on under public comment and they, they well informed me on the details of what this county was going to do by giving a loan for their, uh, events or whatever they, they have going on with the fairground and the chamber, basically. And it was no risk, uh, quick payback. And it was no risk, quick payback. And it was a little bit of interest given to our county citizens and a lot of money flowing around for events that happened for all the people in the county. So, if it's proper, I would move that we support the details of going into a loan for this event.
Okay, we got a point of order from Commissioner Barron.
Okay, all these issues that are coming up have to wait until...
We're going to get a mic on there.
All right, the point of order is that, actually, my bad for making the motion on that first one, item thirteen.
You're forgiven.
But anyway, the, this item and I believe the last one have to wait until our next board.
Based on our policy.
Based on our policy.
Again, in the audience, you are right.
Let me make a comment.
I don't see the saying as spending money and borrowing money as part of the financial policy of... That was put to this board earlier this year that before we can spend money, we need to table it when it's brought up. We're not spending money here, we're loaning or borrowing the money to an entity at the county. I don't consider it the same as actually spending because all that money's coming back.
I have a question from Administrator.
What? Commissioner View, most of us have gone to a financial institution and borrowed its money. And the terms are that we have to pay it back, but also on the ledgers that the financial institution would keep, it is an expenditure. That loan is an expenditure, they may have a different description for it. So, this is an expenditure, this is under finance. It's, yes, it's, the plan is that it's paid back, but it is under your expenses that you have put this money up. So, it's, there's really a wash on this.
By me? Yes, Mr. Peterson, go ahead, please.
I agree with Commissioner Barron, and we've had talked about this at the Finance Committee meeting on this subject. As much as I would like to okay that tonight and give the money to them as soon as possible, we do have a policy on that. The only thing I'd like to add is, and this is just nothing important, I guess, but being a general contractor and having other businesses, from time to time, I've had to borrow money, startup money for a project. And with the idea that I'm going to pay it back and then this, I look at this the same way. This is startup money, this is a new project for them, this is going to bring a lot of money and a lot of business into this area. Not just for hotels, but for gas stations, restaurants, grocery stores, the whole shoot mat. I think it's a very good expenditure of money. But on the same token, like I said, as much as I'd like to pass it tonight, I do feel that we have to follow our policy on this one, just like anything else.
So, I would, I would agree with, we've loaned money before to this, to the chamber, they've paid it back. We have, this is an incredible resource and pillar of the community, so supporting this is, to me, a no-brainer. But we are hamstrung by our own policies to do this tonight. Does that cause any issues? No, all right, very good. Very good, then, we have a motion and we have a second to table this to the next meeting and then we should approve it. Mr. Melner, you have anything? He's golden, all right.
Can you clarify?
Do we, we have a motion now?
Yeah, we have a motion, but I'd like a clarification on, is this going to hinder what you're trying to do?
Well, there's a sense of urgency, absolutely.
Okay, well, that's all I need to know.
Then we're going to have to have a special meeting then?
That's what I was thinking.
So, um...
Can I have a moment to just review the finance policy?
Well, we have our numbers person going to review the finance.
I can add to this, of being a Finance Committee member, this was brought up and the chamber's representative said that
that they knew this going into it, that they were just waiting for the next board meeting. Yes, there's a sense of urgency, but we made it clear that they, they took it.
To the next board meeting is August four.
Me?
Yes, please.
And I'm not sure on this, but did we have an exception for emergencies in our policy?
That's what I'm looking for, Commissioner. That's exactly what I'm looking for.
That's August first?
I thought it was the fourth.
So, the policy state items recommended from the Finance Committee are to be presented to the Board of Commissioners as new business with no action taken. At the next Board of Commissioners meeting, such item will return as unfinished business for action. Exceptions for this procedural policy are those of emergency expenditures at the expression of the Board of Commissioners.
I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules for this and vote on this tonight.
So, you are saying we have an emergency and so we're looking for the exception?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Peterson. Thank you, I kept hollering. We have a motion by Commissioner Peterson that we have an emergency situation to suspend the rules. We got support by Commissioner View. Any other, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by, well, we should do a roll call because they want the money. So, this will be a loan, paid back at three percent.
How much is the money?
Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it's a loan, paid back at three percent.
For two years.
For two years. Any other questions, please, it's okay. This is not the gift, it's not a grant, it is a loan. All right, very good, um, clerk? Sorry, Captain.
Melner?
Yes.
You?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
And one?
Yes. You're welcome, Vicki. We're in an emergency situation, so... All right, it's always a pleasure to do business with the chamber because they get, they get our back too. Airport manager's salary package. Well, we can talk about it and then we'll run it next time. The airport manager, do you want to discuss anything, Ashley? Okay, I'll take it, please.
Okay, the, what was requested was a salary range for the position of airport manager of sixty to seventy thousand dollars. Depending on qualifications, I'm not totally positive that this falls under the expenditure because it's... It is giving them the permission to utilize that range. And they have to do the interviews, this is not, this is...
It's not money going out.
It's not money going out, and it's the interviews, they have seven people interviewed, it's not going to happen. And just the next two weeks, I believe, it's going to be happening soon. It's just, it's just a recommendation or brought before the board, a discussion about that range. And that's, and so now we've given the ability to be able to put that on the table for the candidates that are going to recommend.
All right, gentlemen, my own perspective on this, I have been in support of increasing wages for our employees for some time now. I believe we owe them that, and I have specifically thought that the airport manager position should be increased. So, you're more than welcome to speak your piece, anybody want the mic? Mr. View?
Yeah, well, me and Commissioner Peterson were privileged to be at the meeting, have all fifteen, sixteen candidates look at them. And this by far will be the low end of what these airport candidates are expecting from what I've seen. So, I would be in total support along with checking out the budget to make sure that we can afford this.
Mr. Peterson?
Yeah, I agree. We are on the low end of the people and we've had some fantastic resumes. When we started interviewing them, more about them, but some very highly qualified people and, believe it or not, from all over the world. We had one applicant from Jamaica. So, we're wondering how is it going other than fair in this cold weather? But anyway, we do have, we do have a lot of very qualified people. And like I said, I agree with Commissioner View that this is the low end of the scale. And this is going to be a starting point, hopefully to get somebody in this, but we may have to revisit even the seventy thousand dollars. So, I don't know if we vote on this tonight or put it off to the next one, but I'm in favor of this.
My last comment is, just not to circumvent our financial policy, I don't think it makes a difference if we vote on it tonight because I think the interviews are going to take all of next week scheduling. And then after that, there will be another meeting to oversee what was done and maybe a second round of interviews with two final candidates. I don't really know how it's going to work, but we'll decide at the airport board and we'll have a meeting by the next time. Just substantiate that and probably have some idea what we're looking at in case we have to increase it or maybe we can lower it.
This, in my opinion, is not circumventing the financial policy, but it is authorizing a sliding scale. So, do we have a motion or would you like to table?
Table.
So, I would have a motion to table.
I'll make a motion to table until August first.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Melner, supported by Commissioner Peterson, additional discussion? All those in favor of tabling this until the next meeting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, this will pass. And thank you. Those are the four items that we have. We have to go into a closed session. Oh, public comment, well, I was getting to that. But we're going to give you the opportunity to do general public comment prior to that, so you don't have to sit around if you don't want to. So, those of you who wish to speak, general public comments, three minutes, please, you may address the board, and thank you. Get you a microphone here. Okay, thanks. Sorry about that.
Joelle Roberts, Don't Come Resident. I had one statement to read, but being at this meeting, I kind of have other little ones I just want to comment. The comment earlier about critical race theory, I do not agree with it. However, the statement that gay people are pedophiles is an ignorant statement to say. Anyway, the other item is the animation and installation process that has been dealing with for a long time, a year or more. It has been mastercised just for the purpose of one individual's own personal financial gain. And it has violated numerous statutes law requirement because of, he has not devoted one had personal involvement in financial money, which from day one has been a purpose. And it has not been for intimidation, except the intimidation they have thrown on the people. So, today, what I was here for, I wanted to mention, the excluded from tonight's agenda was notice of demand to Michigan Delta County Commissioners. Cease and desist the electronic registration information center, AKA ARIT contract. Suspension of, suppression of this public notice is blocking and interfering with people's inherent rights. In doing so, breaches the sworn oath to support the Constitution. This contract hands over the personal, the people's personal private information, such as voter registration, social security, and various other personal records to non-governmental third parties. We, the people, have the right to know. You are obligated to, obligated to inform the people of this notice, unfortunately failed. The essence of this cease and desist is as follows. Please take note, the government agents sign the electronic registration information center ARIT contract, binding Michigan government entitles to divert and afford modification the people's personal identification information outside of government trustee ship and into the control of various unspecified agents in the network of ARIT. Thus, the people's guarantee right to privacy has been forever injured. The remedy is due by dissolving the ARIT agreement immediately. This served notice requires action within thirty days. Affidavits sworn under penalty of perjury must have been submitted if disagreed with the cease and desist. Inaction is to agree.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, we have to cut you off in three minutes, I apologize.
So, you agree with cease and desist, that's good to know.
Thank you very much, dear. I appreciate your time. And thank you for coming. General public comment, please, if you may, address the board, three minutes, and thank you.
I believe that you, our Delta County Commissioners, will continue to work within the framework of the US Constitution as we have seen tonight. Those who believe that they would perform this as better, in a way, patiently and respectfully for being directed by their decisions, I thank you for your word.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
General public comment, please. You have three minutes to address the board. Good evening and welcome. You got to turn it on, just pop that little button up.
Name is Jeff Lurie, I'm a trustee for the Cornell Township. I just wanted a moment to thank the board for their voting for preserving the townships and preserving the people's wishes. I say here for that, a lot of people will sleep a lot easier tonight. The other thing that I wanted to say, and unfortunately left, is usually when people do a good job, they never fear it. But when they do a bad job, the phone rang off the wall. And Jody Norton has done one hell of a job for our county. He's setting down money wisely, and when you ride down the road and you can see where the township, where the county money is going, and Jody has done a hell of a job.
Thank you. Thank you, Ed. Evening, sir, and welcome.
Robert Bishak, back again. Thank you very much for your efforts this evening and taking action in this situation. It was a great group by the county and I am just very proud to market this area and thank you once again.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate your service. General public comment?
Chris Williams.
Yeah, pop the button up, sorry.
Hello?
There you go.
Chris Williams, One River Township. I have a couple of comments this evening. During the resolution discussion with UP AAA, Mr. Barron, Mr. Barron, pontificated...
You're caught, no.
Pontificated about...
We'll get you another mic here, hold on.
During the UP AAA resolution discussion, Commissioner Barron pontificated endlessly about, and held the other four commissioners to a standard that you should have read everything in that document and should have been completely prepared and that you were just simply trusting that organization without reviewing and just taking their word at whatever it is. I would like to point out that Mr. Barron's hypocrisy in this, because I came to this podium quite some time ago and I pointed out that Mr. Barron, who is the liaison to the Conservation District, had allowed four hundred and seventy-some odd thousand dollars, nearly five hundred thousand dollars of tax payer money to go to paying bonuses over a period of time, and it was under his watch as well as others. But he allowed it, he did not pay attention, and he simply... Uh, but he allowed it, he did not pay attention and he simply just trusted that they were doing their job and that he didn't, that you didn't need to pay attention. Clearly, that's not the case. The other, uh, comment I would like to make is Mr. Moyle, Commissioner Moyle. You, this evening, uh, pointed out that Mr. Baron is being called names, uh, homophobe, xenophobe, et cetera, and that that's wrong. And I agree with you, that's absolutely wrong. But you also have called me a libtard, a Marxist, a communist, a queen, and I don't even know what other names you've called me. So don't be a, don't be a hypocrite. If people call other people names and you don't like it, then you shouldn't do it either.
General public comment.
Is it on that? Okay, cool. Uh, Brady Irving, uh, Wells Township. Commissioner Baron, you, uh, mentioned for some reason, I'm not sure why, the Holocaust and the twelve million people who were systemically rounded up and slaughtered by the Nazi party. Of those twelve million people were the queer people of Germany and the lands that they conquered. The Weimar Republic was a haven for the queer community before people like you took power. And then you slapped purple, uh, pink triangles on us and marched us into gas chambers. Jesus Christ is a prophet of love and tolerance. Uh, I don't even know the church and I know that. The people that you push away, that you clearly have deep hatred for in your heart are the people who would have been welcomed by open arms into its flock. And I don't know what falsifiably, what caricature of Jesus Christ you follow, but if it tells you to hate and despise your fellow American, your neighbor, then that God is a farce. And I promise that I'll save you a seat in the Kingdom of Satan.
Thank you. General public comment, please.
Just wanted to.
Hit that button up, sir.
Just wanted to say a quick, uh, thank you for your guys' support of, uh, Visit Escanaba, Eric's right chamber and, uh, also local businesses like myself, so we very much appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. General public comment. If you state your name, it would be nice to, guys.
Monica Peach Ford River. I am a minority, I am Mexican, and I am highly offended at what two of our commissioners talked about tonight in terms of being a person of color. Um, and it's very ironic and I find it quite contradictory that you guys want to push this Visit Escanaba, which I totally agree with and think it's going to be great. And yet you want to exclude people who do not belong according to what Baron said in regards to this hidden agenda with diversity, equity, and inclusion. Um, diversity, equity, and inclusion are implemented in order to right a wrong that happened to people like my family. Um, when they were brought over here from the United States requests for migrant workers because in World War II, all the, the Americans left the country to go fight over in Europe. Somebody needed to come in and pick your lettuce and pick your tomatoes and get them to the grocery store. That's what the Bracero program did for the United States of America. And it lasted until nineteen sixty-three or four. So when the migrant people, the Mexicans who came to this country asked by the United States of America to come and work in the field because there were not enough white workers to do the work, now you guys are spitting in the face of the people on the backs of the people who provide for you every time you walk into Walmart or Meyer. So it's really irritating to me that you guys have stood up there and talked about how wonderful the white person is. I'm married to a white person. I was forced to be called Caucasian for years. So it's really offensive to me that you guys would contradict yourselves by doing this in terms of wanting people to come here, yet they have to meet a certain requirement. And by God, they better not be LGBTQ. And I hope to God none of you have people of that sexual orientation in your family. Because they're people. I'm a person. I do not need to be ignored by you because you're afraid of me. I have a master's degree. Nobody here gave that to me on a silver platter. I worked my ass off for it. So the fact that you guys sit up there and make these racist comments, and it is racism.
I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a fine evening. State your name and welcome.
Whitney Maloney, Gladstone. Uh, I want to start out, start off by thanking the board. I have been Delta County for seven years and it wasn't until this year that I paid any attention to the board. You've done an exceptional job getting this community's attention. Unfortunately, it's not for particularly valiant reasons. I would like to take this time to express my displeasure. I don't know any of you personally and I only know what you've chosen to share publicly. It started with Emily. I don't know Emily, but by all accounts she was doing her job effectively prior to the meeting in which you voted to terminate her. She does multiple times to get clarification on her reviews, feedback from this board, and answers to her questions and concerns. After being stonewalled, she addressed you publicly. You have, you have admitted that you did not walk into that meeting planning to terminate her, which indicates that it was an emotional, knee-jerk reaction and not a strategic, evidence-based decision in the best interest of this community. We still don't know why you fired Emily. And then I did what many self-respecting, curious, well-intentioned millennial does in a situation like this. I Googled you, Mr. Moyle. I may not care what you do in your own bedroom, but I do care how you speak to and about women. I found your Sharp to understand the channel and watched you make jokes about Jewish whores and laughed about a fake product you named Pink Taco. Quote, "If your crotch looks like a sharp-hamyon, use Pink Taco," unquote. The transcriptions of these videos were too, quote, "vile, disgusting, and disturbing" to print through the newspaper because I tried. Then there was the contract with the Sozial Conservation District debacle. You refused to have an attorney look over the contract. Then you refused to listen to the advice of our prosecuting attorney who publicly explained why it was not in the best interest for the board to hire outside attorney and instead you hired one who has represented you personally. Then there was the Zoom issue. Emily was able to provide that resource with little to no issue before you fire her. The community has said it loud and clear, "We want virtual access to local government." It's fifteen dollars a month figured out. And then there's the annexation, a blatant conflict of interest by a man who obviously desires to use his political position for personal gain. Very few things unite the political landscape these days, but there are fewer. Vladimir Putin, cute puppy videos, and perfect annexation petitions. The public is aligning against you not because they are radical leftists who want to turn this county into a socialist utopia, uh, but because we want different, smarter, more honest people in charge of this county, it's that simple. We need leadership that can understand an issue, use facts to make decisions, show up to important meetings, communicate clearly, and engage with the nuance inherent to local politics. The devil is in the details, as they say, and simply dismissing an entire faction of your constituency as communists is lame, outdated, and unoriginal, but more importantly, it is divisive and ineffective.
Thank you very much, ma'am, I appreciate it. General public comment, please. General public comment.
Thank you for coming. And I want to thank the, Nancy and Ashley and Brandon. You guys do a great job for the county. I asked Brandon for help and I've forgotten the name, I'm sorry.
It's all right.
I've known every one of you commissioners for many years. Steve, you probably the lumps. You coached my little girl in girls softball. Mr. Moyle, you and I served on the city council. Mr. Mellner, you and I have worked together on many commission meetings. And Mr. Peterson, we've come across each other many times with gun issues. And Mr. Baron, while I would disagree with you on the annexation, here's the problem. We can agree to disagree without tearing each other down. So while I agree with a lot of the things you guys do, I can disagree with some of the things you do. But when we get to a per, to the personalities, and I agree, some of the, the verbiage was not very good. But as commissioners, you need to think about this. Elbrud hasn't made a decision yet. Do you really want them to hear this? This whole group? And the comments that are being thrown out to this commission? It's not polite, it's not ethically correct. You might be correct in what you're saying to the commissioners. But decency, common decency in this community, I'm sick and tired of us eating our own. And disagree with somebody, but you don't have to rip them down. Don't get so personal. It's, it, it just makes me ill to think that this is what we've come to. I'm sitting in the back here with Tom Saka, sorry, Tom. He and I went to kindergarten together, all the way through school. St. Thomas, he probably went Holy Name, I don't know. But we've known each other forever. We respect each other. I'll bet you there's some things I disagree with Tom on. But I'm not going to rip him apart. So we need to learn to respect these commissioners. They were voted on by the people, whether you like it or not. So get over yourselves. Start participating in a good community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. General public comment, please.
Hi, my name is Shaw Maloney, I am fifteen. This is my first meeting that I've ever been to because I wanted to see how local government works and see you guys in person. I am absolutely heartbroken that these are the people that we have in charge. As someone who is not only the upcoming generation, but as a female who has blatantly been disrespected by a leader, you guys are the people that we look up to, you are who we are learning from, and this is what we're learning. It's just the story.
Thank you. General public comment, please. General public comment. Good evening and welcome.
Scott. We've heard some quite a lot of talking points up here, just like the last couple of minutes, and a few else. I'm just kind of disappointed because I've been on my own completely since I was nineteen years old, actually before that. Paid my way, got to school, had some moments where people disrespected me, treated me badly. Shit happened. But not once did I run home and ask my mommy for help. And I raised a minority daughter who was the same. She's strong, she doesn't whine, she moves forward. And I'm kind of proud right now because I feel like I'm in a room full of victims. And I'm not a victim, she's not either. So I guess I'm not speaking to you, but I have to look at you when I say it. Happy event.
Thank you very much. General public comment, please.
I have two tonight. I have Teresa, Teresa Ross, Ford River Township. This is my fifth public comment regarding Zoom access since the board eliminated on February fourth, two thousand twenty-three. On our before, or on our vote, February sixth, Mr. Moyle sent me the following response to an email I sent him. Given the fact that you are arbitrarily impaired and acquire a wheelchair, I will bring this forth again on your behalf. I was following the advice of our IT director. However, I have a substantial passion for people with disabilities and the struggles that they face daily. And your situation does not fall on a blind eye or deaf ear. I will talk to our interim administrator on your behalf and I am sorry for any inconvenience this may have caused you so far. Thank you, David Moyle. In response to my April eleventh email inquiry as to when this issue would be revisited, I received this response from Mr. Moyle. I have been speaking to other commissioners as well as our ITI. I know it wasn't on the agenda, still trying to see what we've done, David Moyle. That was April thirteenth. To date, there has been no action or communication. Did I mention I have brought to the score five times and still it isn't being ignored? I will not drop this issue and I thank Commissioners Mellner and you for being in favor of reinstating access to Zoom. I am officially requesting that this be an agenda item at the next commissioner meeting.
This one is Dana Vanethen, Escanaba. When I listened to the commissioners meeting on May ninth, two thousand twenty-three, I was stopped dead in my tracks. I thought I had missed on the fifth example of describing COVID relief funds as Wuhan cash. Sadly, I did not misunderstand. That's exactly what you said. I have come to learn that three of the commissioners described it that way. In fact, at the finance meeting on Monday, Bobby Baron called it hoochie hoo fun. The COVID relief funds came from American taxpayers. They funded businesses with TBT loans, communities with HOISA, workers suddenly unemployed. It was a once-in-a-lifetime pandemic. To have you minimize it or to use it as a racist proverb of becoming of an elected official, you should be ashamed of yourselves. Over one point one million Americans died. One hundred ninety-three Delta County residents have been reported as COVID deaths. There should be more, one more on one one twenty-three. My dad's come to COVID. He was in Lake Hattaway, Arizona, so he would be counted as a staff there. He had just driven my mom, his wife of fifty years, across the country to their winter home. Yes, he had health issues, but he lasted it for his last days. He's been hooked up to a bed under, I tell my mom, I'm sorry. I tell my mom had to make a decision that no one should have to make. His grandkids lost their grandparents, mom lost her husband, and my siblings and I lost our amazing dad. So for you to sit up there in meetings and describe COVID relief money as anything but COVID relief money is just one more thing that proves you aren't serious people and you truly have no business representing this county. Shame on you, Dana Vanethen.
Thank you. General public comment, please. Anybody for general public comment?
Hello, sir.
Hello. Good evening, Joe Kaplan, Ford River Township. I just want to let you and the public know that there's a Delta Conservation District meeting tomorrow at two PM in this building and which will be seating two board members and discussing a full slate of, uh, agenda items that are available on the Conservation District website. And that's tomorrow at two PM in this building, and I think we'll be able to room over there, thank you.
Thank you, sir. General public comment, if anybody is interested, general public comment.
I'm not. I'm just going to take the microphone.
Okay. Yes, it is.
I agree with many of the things that were mentioned tonight, and I will be so.
And I really support the Escape Escanaba. And I think you guys have done a fantastic job. I appreciate you early work at Conservation Week. I am waiting for meetings, hearing what's going on with the finances. I am totally devastated that you voted to not support the, whatever it was to the UCAP. I have been involved with UCAP for many years. As a senior companion going to Mercy Homes, a recipient of meals on meals. Uh, they, they help people get onto the insurance programs that are needed, advise people, and to sit there and not support them is blatant neglect on your part. I, I, you said you were the only person in the state of Michigan that voted no to support this, um, UCAP resolution. I also believe that you are the only person, Mr. Knowle, to vote no communities on meals, no recondition in the upper peninsula. Let's just discuss this. Mr. Baron, thanks, sir.
But two different programs. You're talking Community Action.
We really can't.
Community Action is another program in the UCAP.
Thank you. General public comment, please. We gotta turn that microphone off, it's gonna be screaming holy hell, X. General public comment. One more call for general public comment. General public comment is closed. Thank you for coming tonight. We will be having a closed session. Um, and so if you, uh, you want to do, obviously, here, or if you want to go into another room?
We have another room available, too.
We'll be going into another room. I need a motion to go in. It's moved by Commissioner Baron.
I'll support it.
Supported by Commissioner Peterson. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are headed towards closed session.
All right, um, we would need a motion to come out of closed session and go back into regular sessions. It would be moved by Commissioner Baron, supported by Commissioner Melner. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 It is important to note that under the advice of council, we went into closed session. We made no binding votes. We voted on nothing. We discussed an employee's contract. Um. I guess we, uh, do we need a motion on, now that we're back in open session, to submit to our, please?
No, we're not approving the contract yet.
No, no. We'll wait till, um, negotiations conclude to approve the contract, or approve the contract.
I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, sir. You want to move?
Well, I'll move that we, uh, take the recommendations of, uh, council and submit it to Ashley Young to review and go from there on, uh, accepting that, uh, contract and have it signed immediately after with a special meeting of the commissioners.
This is a whopping motion. Can we, can we streamline it a tad?
Well.
I mean, I could try to repeat it. I just want to put words in your mouth. So you're moving that we listen to the advice of council and that we, um,
Submit, submit.
Give the contract to Ashley.
Yes.
And wait for her counter.
Yeah, to, 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 to look at it.
Pending her approval.
Yes.
Um, and upon the, her approval, then we would.
Immediately schedule a.
Schedule a, a meeting.
A meeting.
To have it signed.
To have it signed.
Do I have a support on that motion?
I will support that.
So moved by Commissioner View, you just heard, supported by Commissioner Peterson. Additional discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
That would pass unanimously. Um, commissioners' concerns. Mr. Peterson?
I'm hungry.
That's a concern.
Okay, um, Mr. View?
Yeah, I have a couple.
You want the mic, have a, have a.
I have, I have a couple quick things that, uh, I'd like to enlighten the public about. Public health, uh, Delta Menominee counties. We had a meeting, uh, last week. They have their, uh, drive-through flu vaccination clinics. In Delta County, it's in the parking lot at the service center that we usually have our meeting. It'll be September twenty-third, nine to one P M. You don't even have to get out of your vehicle. They can stab you right in your vehicle. And I'm just playing. Menominee Clinic, for anyone that's in the Menominee area, it's September twenty-eighth, eleven, eleven A M. to two P M. at Spies Field Park. Also at that meeting, there was, uh, my favorite part of the meeting is, uh, medical directors' report. I don't know how many of you know Dr. Robert Yin. He talked about Lyme disease and how it affects people. Very interesting. I'm not gonna go into details, but it's tick season, so he talked a lot about the ticks here. He says, "If you remove them within thirty-six hours, you're gonna be fairly okay on not getting Lyme disease or any of the other thing." But he says, "Make sure you get close to the head of the tick and don't squeeze the body when you're trying to pull them off." So I thought that was some pretty nice advice for the common people to know.
They're disgusting little things, aren't they?
Well, I had one on me, so I thought it was good information.
You had one? I came out of the woods the other day, I had thirty-two of them on me.
Well, as long as you get them out within thirty-six hours, I guess it's okay for my advice that was given. Never forget, the Vietnam Moving Wall will be back in Manistee Marina on August tenth through the fourteenth. That's not very far away of this year. Uh, any community members that would like to ride in the American Legion Riders are welcome to join in the motorcycle possess, uh, possession on, uh, I have a hard time with someone, but I don't know. On August eleventh, staging at the Veteran Park in Gladstone at two P M. They plan on leaving just before three P M. We're hoping for three to four hundred riders to honor our Vietnam veterans on this parade to Manistee. So it's an open invitation for everybody. Uh, Ashley did send us, uh, a ribbon cutting, a couple of ribbon cuttings. One I missed was on Friday, July fourteenth. It was a change of owner, ownership for U-Puck. I don't know how many are familiar with it. I've never just had anything to do with it. So since I was busy on Friday at noon when they were having that open house, I went in there, took my grandson to see what the business has to offer. It's a pretty neat place for our residents and travelers to stop at. They have cornhole, miniature golf, a variety of arcade games. What's the neatest thing about it? It's kind of like black light, neon, and the dark stuff for these games. It's really cool. I didn't play anything, but I, I did get a nice tour by, uh, Todd Wade. And I just want, and they had beverages and food on site, and I'm wishing the new owners, uh, much success, which is Robert and Jody Pontius. They're in my district out of Gladstone, and they committed to making Delta County a better place one business at a time. Okay, uh.
You want me to die, don't you?
Well, one other thing. You have American Legion baseball tournaments coming up in Gladstone? July twenty-seventh, twenty-ninth, first game on the twenty-seventh, ten A M., just for your sports fans. Other than that, thank you. Goodbye.
I talk fast. It's all positive.
Okay, uh, I do have a couple of interesting facts here. Uh, the Great Lakes Tunnel, which is line five that goes under the, uh, by the bridge, uh, in late June, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers announced a narrow scope for its environmental review of the Great Lakes project. We agreed with their, uh, conclusion as the core analysis should only review the actual impact. And anyways, it sounds good. You know, we're getting that much closer to having the tunnel put underneath the, the, uh.
Straits.
Straits. Uh, here's a little tidbit that they sent me also. Line five fuels Michigan and the surrounding econo, uh, economists with enough gas to fill one million passenger cars and trucks a day.
Damn.
That is how important it is. Uh, another thing, there is a benefit that's gonna be for Jeff Ives. Uh, I think he has brain cancer. Uh, it's gonna be September thirtieth at the Bark River Senior Center. Uh, there's gonna be a spaghetti meal from seven to twelve. The live auction to follow at seven. There's gonna be raffles, fifty-fifty kids' games, and activities. Uh, they are asking for donations. Uh, you can contact, uh, uh, boy, his, these two people, Mara Power at nine oh six, two eight oh three four one four. Or Carissa Ives at nine oh six three nine nine three four one four. That's all.
Thank you. Um, thank you for coming tonight. I have no comments.
I will treat you with gratitude. Quote here from C.S. Lewis, "Education well values, as useful as it is, seems rather to make a man more clever than one."
I have nothing. I have nothing, thank you.
Okay, um, I just need that mic again real briefly for, um, we have, uh, a next scheduled for Board of Commissioners meeting, uh, scheduled on eight, one, twenty-three at five P M. It's a Commissioners informational workshop. Uh, we have another one scheduled for eight, fifteen, twenty-three at five fifteen at the Service Center. Uh, and again, a regular Board of Commissioners meeting on nine, five, twenty-three at five o'clock at the Service Center. There are no thirty-day appointments, no notices. Uh, maybe somebody wants to move to adjourn or rejoin.